Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the seniors, I'm sorry, yes, the senior center here for the annual town meeting, spring edition. And if you know anything about town meeting, you know that tonight is budget night. And we're going to be hearing from town manager Paul Cohen and others about the state of the budget now and in the forthcoming years to come. The news is not particularly good. You know there's a lot of chaos governmentally at the federal level, but certainly at the state level. And one of the consequences of that, compounded with the inflation that has been running ahead of the two and a half percent that the town is limited to increase its levy with each year, means that, as Paul Cohen is likely to say tonight, for the first time in several years, we will not have a level services budget going forward for fiscal '26. That means to say, there will be some cuts, and how severe those are, we'll hear from him. On the other side of that coin, ironically, the capital budget, this is the amount of money that is spent to buy things like fire trucks and such, will actually be going up this year to roughly $3 million. John Souza will be making that presentation a little bit later this evening. That is warrant article number eight. In the meantime, we are looking forward to some presentations at the beginning of this first night session that will detail the state of the town, in a sense, it's the state of Chelmsford. And we hope you will enjoy that and take heed of all that's being said. We have, I think, 32 articles on the warrant, and some of those will be taken through what's called the consent agenda. That is warrant articles that appear every year and really engender no discussion. Those will be collected together into a single vote so that we can expedite things for the other articles that will take some time. And so I look forward to being with you these next few nights. We're hoping for only two nights. I hear a rumor that we may be going three nights for this town meeting, so we'll find out. Kelly Beatty, turning it back to you live, stay tuned.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this moment, would you please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of a town meeting rep who recently passed between our last meeting, and that would be Thomas Okay, now, we'll test your voting devices. And for the record, I've checked the warrant, and for the record, it complies with the requirements The fire exits are located on both sides of the hallway here and at the entrance. I've also been asked to request that if you leave the meeting early, kindly drop off your electronic voting devices with the checkers in the front hall. Well, there's no timer on the quorum count, and it doesn't say it, but I will declare that we have a quorum. Earlier this year, I had a health event that made me aware that I might not be able to attend all town meeting sessions. Therefore, to meet the responsibilities entrusted to me when I was elected... Therefore, I'll start all over again. Earlier this year, I had a health event that made me aware that I might not be able to attend all town meeting sessions. Therefore, to meet the responsibilities entrusted to me when I was elected and to ensure that town meeting proceeds even in my absence, I have appointed attorney Amina Langford as my assistant town meeting moderator. Would you like to do the swearing in?
Good evening. May I please have all the newly elected and newly appointed town meeting representatives please stand? Thank you. Okay, you're going to kindly repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear and affirm
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a town meeting representative
As a town meeting representative.
According to the bylaws and charter
According to the bylaws and charter.
Of the town of Chelmsford
Of the town of Chelmsford.
The laws of the Commonwealth
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the constipation of the United States.
And the constipation of the United States.
You are so sworn. Congratulations, and thank you.
I would like to welcome all town meeting representatives to tonight's meeting and congratulate all of you who have been elected this year. As has been our practice, we have two screens so that all representatives may read the articles and any amendments upon which you will be voting. You can also view the slides on the screen on your tablets, laptops, computers, or other smart devices. Simply log on using the instructions on the screen. Speaking of amendments, all amendments will be submitted on the forms which you get from either the town clerk or me. If you know prior to town meeting that you intend to file an amendment, you can see me or Patricia Zerres prior to the meeting for the form, or you can email them to me, and I will make the necessary copies and distribute them to town council and the typist so that these will be ready before town meeting begins. And if you are, and if you get it to either of us prior to the introduction of the article, town council should have the opportunity to review the amendment which will expedite the meeting. This form is an original in three copies. I retain the white copy. The yellow copy goes to the amendment assistant. The pink top copy goes to the town clerk, and you retain the orange copy. I would like to thank Chelmsford Telemedia for their assistance in setting up the screen, timer, streaming, and broadcasting this meeting. Here are the rules with respect to town meeting protocol and procedure. All questions and debate shall emanate from the microphone facing the moderator in the center hall and shall go through the moderator. Board of committee members or other town officials or department heads may use other microphones to answer questions or provide information to the meeting. Speakers shall refrain from asking rhetorical or argumentative questions and shall only ask questions seeking needed information. These questions should be in the who, what, when, where, and why mode. Kindly avoid argumentative questions that start with or end "isn't it true?" or "wouldn't you admit?" I would prefer not to have to rule questions out of order, but I am bound by the laws and regulations that define our conduct, and I will do my best to enforce them fairly and respectfully. All presenters of articles shall be limited to 10 minutes, and I shall notify each when they have one minute remaining. With respect to discussion, speakers are encouraged to be brief, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes of debate. You should be able to make your points within three minutes. If you truly believe that this is not enough time for you to make your arguments, kindly advise me in advance, and I may allow some leeway. This time limit also applies to responding to questions. Speakers may ask up to four questions prior to engaging in discussion. Making inquiries will not be considered part of the three-minute discussion limit unless you have started discussion and then asked questions. Once the clock starts, it will not stop until the speaker does her time expires. I would appreciate being advised that a speaker is beginning discussion. A person should not speak a second time and shall only be given this opportunity to correct or dispute a statement of fact made by a previous speaker. This privilege will be narrowly construed by the moderator. We do have some other rules of protocol. Please do not refer to any prior speaker by name. The proper designation is to call him or her the previous speaker. Please refrain from personal attacks. Challenging or arguing in opposition to another's position is fair game, and is what this meeting is all about. Intentional slander against any individual or group cannot be tolerated. Let us refrain from repeating arguments that have already been made, but new ideas or distinctions are welcome and encouraged. Discussion of pending litigation will not be permitted unless specifically included in the warrant article being debated. If during the course of discussion I observe several speakers on one side of an issue but none in opposition, I will interrupt debate to inquire if there are any who wish to express the opposing position or offer an amendment. If there are none, I shall end debate and move the question. If there is opposition, I will move that party to the front of the line and allow debate to continue. I trust that you will all appreciate how this will advance our mutual goal of moving town meeting along. To those who may be next in line, should I ever have to exercise this process, you have my apologies in advance. There will not be any debating from the presenter's podium. They may answer questions, but should they want to engage in debate, presenters would have to queue up in line like everyone else. Transparency and effective governance are the two goals of town meeting. To expedite our meetings without affecting transparency, we have successfully employed a process called consent agenda. A consent agenda allows the representatives to bundle several routine warrant articles into one so that instead of taking several separate votes on these essentially bookkeeping articles, we take one vote on all of them. The town manager and I have discussed the type of articles that would be conducive to this process. These are articles that generally do not involve any questions or debate and are passed in the normal course of town business. I shall request a motion that the body vote to approve a consent agenda involving the articles to be included therein. This still allows questions and answers and discussion with the opportunity to add or delete consent agenda articles as the town meeting deems best. To this end, I am suggesting that the spring consent agenda consists of the following articles: 2, 7, 9, 10, 12 through 16, 25, 33, and 34. Article 27 is a citizen's petition, and out of courtesy to the presenter, we will take that article up first on our Thursday, May 1 session. Out of regard for presenters and your fellow town meeting reps, I respectfully request that there be no conversations at your tables. If I can hear background discussions up here, it means that there may be representatives who cannot hear the presentation, questions and answers, or discussion. At the end of tonight's session, I will entertain a motion to reconvene on Thursday, May 1, 2025, at 7:30 at the senior center. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As is customary... Good evening, I'm Paul Cohen, Town Manager. As is customary, at the beginning of every fall and spring annual town meeting, we begin with Article 1, which is the reports of town officers and committees. The reports this evening are listed on the screen in front of you. I'll provide some initial remarks regarding the recently completed strategic plan for the town, which was funded by town meeting. Select Board member Pat Maloney will provide an update regarding the Parker School Building Committee as chair, and I'll provide a financial overview of the town as we go into the financial articles of our consideration this evening. First is the strategic plan. The Strategic Plan Committee completed its work just over a week ago with the unveiling of the fiscal year 2026 to 2030 strategic plan. This plan will be posted tomorrow on the town's website, and we want to thank all of you who contributed in the past over almost 18 months for the completion in terms of the work sessions, the public input surveys, and other inputs into the town's strategic plan. The plan at a glance, as you can, maybe it's difficult to read in the slide, but what this involved was basically taking a holistic approach of the town, tweaking and updating the town's mission statement, the vision statement for the community, identifying and listing the guiding principles for the town, and then coming from that, which is the importance, is basically getting into what are the action items that can guide us moving forward in the areas of quality of life, community engagement, high-performing government, infrastructure, and managing growth of our community. So again, the key part is, at this point, is the plan is complete, it's an easy read, we were very well served by Barry Dunn, the town's consultants, who worked with us throughout the project, and now we want to put it into action to assist us during the times that face us in the months and years ahead, and basically have a reporting mechanism as a living document. And so that really is where we're at, and that completes the work of the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. I'll be working with Aaron Cunningham, who's a select board member now, who is a member of the steering committee, and the remaining members of the select board to oversee the implementation of the plan in the years ahead. That's the report on the strategic plan. I will now turn the microphone and podium over to Pat Maloney, the chair of the Parker Middle School Building Committee, for an update.
My name is Patrick Maloney. I'm a member of the select board, but I'm here to present on the school building committee to upgrade or replace Parker Middle School. It's been a few years since I've been here presenting in Article 1, presenting a project in Article 1. Some of you, longtime members, probably remember seeing me every fall and every spring, so anyway. So this body voted last year to, voted $1.8 million for a feasibility study to upgrade or replace Parker Middle School, and I will start with the committee members. So the committee members, as you see, Brandon Kelly is our resident member. Brandon is Facilities Director of Lincoln Schools, and also MCC, MCPPO certified. Paul Cohen, our town manager. Dennis King, who's the chair of the school committee. Dr. Lang, who's the superintendent of schools. Matthew Schweitzer, who's a DPW facilities manager. Tim Parley, the chair of the permanent building committee. Joshua Blagg, who is Parker Middle School's school principal. Brian Curley, the school facilities manager. James Clancy, the finance committee chair. Christine Clancy, the DPW director. Myself. Joanna Johnson-Collins, school director of business and finance. And John Souza, the town finance director and treasurer. So this is the budget for the $1.8 million that this body voted for our last year. We're on time and on budget and all that stuff, but we're just really getting going, so I can say that right now. So this is our budget for the $1.8 million. We have engaged a owner's project manager at this point, and that's about as far as we've gone. I'll explain more about getting them fully on board as we go along. We have yet to bring on a designer, and we have other monies slated to do investigative work to make sure that what we want to do is appropriate and right for the town. So if you're looking at the slide here or at your paperwork, right now, for the feasibility study, our reimbursement rate from the state will be 52.26%. That is just for the feasibility study. As we move on, and if we're fortunate enough to get our project approved by MSBA and everything goes right, we will pick up additional points for the things that you see. Maintenance, which we, which I believe we're very good on. CM@Risk, which is a different way of contracting. Various other things, but, you know, energy efficiency, green schools, indoor equality, et cetera. So we hope to move from the 52.26% upwards of maybe 54, 55% reimbursement if we are fortunate enough to go forward with a project. So that's that. So at this point, we've engaged an owner's project manager. We put out a request for proposals. A couple of months ago, we received 12 proposals from various OPM firms. The proposals were reviewed, and four firms were interviewed by a subcommittee of the school building committee. After conducting the interviews and reference checks, the school building committee decided to hire Leftfield LSLC as the owner's project manager. The school building committee overall, the 13-member committee, approved the subcommittee's recommendation, and we've moved on. So the next step is to introduce Leftfield to MSBA at the May 12 meeting, get their final approval, at which case we'll move to contract with them. MSBA, over the years, has changed a lot. I probably did one of the first projects in town with MSBA when we built the performing arts center and the libraries at the middle schools and so on. We were fortunate back then to get reimbursement at all, but they've become much more stringent, such that we were able to pick our own OPM, but as we move into designer selection, it's a different story. MSBA actually picks the designer for us, so. So as I was stating, once the OPM is on board after May 12, and we get the final approval, we'll move quickly to a contract with them. We'll prepare the designer request for services document with the committee, after which it'll be submitted to MSBA. The process differs slightly from the OPM procurement process in that we have, some say we'll have three members on an overall board, but where we had the full capacity to go with who we wanted for an OPM, MSBA takes a bigger role in selecting the designer for the project. So they have a 13-member, appointed members committee. We have three district members that we have approved in our last meeting. We said that Paul Cohen, Dr. Lang, and Dennis was going to, Dennis from the school committee was going to represent us at that meeting. So the process is much more daunting, but, so we'll have three. They need to have at least six members show up out of 13, and a minimum of nine to constitute a quorum. This is the members that belong to MSBA, the 13 MSBA-appointed designer selection panel members. Some are, all may show up on the given day that we have to have meetings with them to get a designer on board. And we hope to work through the process with the RFQs, with the, for the designer selection, and then hopefully get to one of the MSBA meetings on either July 29th, August 12th, or August 26th. It's an aggressive schedule, but we feel that it's necessary to be able to meet the dates and to be back here with a project to present to this committee, I think, early, So just to wrap up, this is what we're going to be studying, and I'll spend a little bit more time on this. So, and all of these different, these three different options, as I'll call them, have different cost impacts. So the first option, and what we'll be studying, and this is one of the first things that we'll do once we have a designer on board, is we will look at the grade configurations because that will dictate the size of the school that will get built. So right now, the current grade configuration is 5-6 at Parker. That would stay the same if we so choose that option, which would mean a school similar size to the existing Parker, or maybe a little larger. The second option would be a proposed grade 4 through 6 enrollment configuration at a new Parker Middle School. The current elementary schools are getting a little bit crowded. If we chose this option, moving grade 4 out of the elementary schools would increase room to bring, to give us some more, some more room for this, for the 1 through 3 students, or the K through 3 students. The final option is the largest of all. That would bring five grades, all of grade 5 through 8 enrollment configuration to the Parker Middle School. You can see by the number of students, that would be a very, very large school, larger than the high school, the high school population anyway, at this point. So what we'll be studying, once we pick a proposed option, is MSBA requires us to do this, and this is actually taken from MSBA paperwork. We need to develop a site development plan, environmental assessments, geotech assessments, geotech analysis, code analysis of the existing Parker School, which is a requirement by MSBA, and I can tell you that there's a fair amount of work that would be required if we were to bring that school up to complete code. Utility analysis, schematic building floor plans, schematic exterior building elevations, narrative building system descriptions, New England CHIPS scorecard or LEED for a school's checklist, which is your green school projects, in which we would get more points for. Outline specifications, cost estimates, project schedule, and proposed total budget. So there's much work ahead. This is just a quick update to let everybody know what we're going to be working on. We hope to have the designer on board by August, in which case then the real work will start. We will be televising all of our meetings. We've decided at the last meeting that we'll be meeting about once a month, so those will be televised, and we hope that everybody pays attention along the way, so there's no surprises. And that's what we're going to be looking at. So thank you for voting the $1.8 million last year, and we'll spend it wisely and hope to be back with a good project for y'all. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the final report tonight is customary for spring town meeting is to give an overview of the financial articles that are coming before you, because the primary purpose of spring town meeting is to deal with the financial affairs of the town. First, I want to start off with some thank yous. When we were back in this room six months ago, conducting the fall town meeting, the budgetary process for the upcoming fiscal year that begins on July 1 was already underway. Department heads were preparing their budgets. Capital submissions were underway, and during that, over the past six months, there's been efforts from the capital plan committee, presentations to the finance committee, to the select board, and that's what brings us here this evening. And the handouts tonight, you have not only the detailed slides and the presentation, but you also have the green books. The thin green book is the finance committee's report on the operating budget and other warrant articles, and then the thicker green book is the detailed operating budget. Clearly, we're in an extraordinary time. There's uncertainty of federal funding, which influences the state budget, which influences the support that the communities receive, including direct funds that go to the Chelmsford Public Schools primarily for student educational services, as well as the amount of state aid that can be provided as revenue sharing from the state. We're also in a period of higher-than-normal inflation, which has not been uniform. We've seen dramatic increases in major cost factors for the town, such as health insurance and just the goods and services that we purchase, just much like you do when you go out to the supermarket or bring an electrician to your home and so forth. And obviously, looking forward, there's tremendous uncertainty about the economy as we're adopting a budget that's going to begin this July 1 and run through June 30 of 2026. We don't know if a recession's on the horizon. We don't know if inflation's going to be. And tonight, as we're sitting here, the legislature's in the House Representatives meeting this week, with the same uncertainties, trying to develop a spending plan for the Commonwealth, which will then be picked up by the Senate of Massachusetts next month, and then ultimately, hopefully, resolved sometime in July or so, as is customary, for the Commonwealth and the cities and towns who receive revenue sharing. The short-term good news is, is we're going to finish the current fiscal year in the next two months in the black. After that occurs, basically, mid-July, everyone has to have their bills invoiced, as everything's paid out. The town accountant and the town treasurer close out the fiscal year. They submit their balance sheet in August, and in time for consideration at fall town meeting. But the good news is, and you'll see some adjustments in upcoming article 3, that... but basically, we're in good shape. We'll finish the year in the black and, you know, we're obviously well-positioned for what may come at us. What we're proposing this evening is a hundred and sixty-eight point four million dollar fiscal year twenty-six operating budget, six million dollars of capital expenditure plan, and this is basically based on the information that we have available to us. The proposed operating budget uses all of our available revenue capacity under, allowed under Proposition Two and a Half, and, and is based upon the governor's proposed local aid budget, because that's the most up-to-date information we have, since, as I mentioned a moment ago, the House Representatives and their version is debating that and hopefully we'll come up with their plan later this week. And as you can see, the last line of the slide, we're really dealing with extraordinary increases. Our health insurance premiums are going up by almost eighteen percent, and we also have an eight-point-four percent increase in the town's retirement assessment. We've updated our five-year financial plan, and basically, we have to by state law, we have a balanced budget as we're acting this evening, but clearly, as we look into the next four years beyond that, we are projecting deficits in terms of whether to maintain level services. We're mindful that things are uncertain, but you've got to recognize what's going on out there. If you just, just look at today's media, Town of Brookline's looking at an eight-million-dollar school deficit. The Town of Milton's looking at a second override within four years. The number of communities that are seeking operational overrides under Proposition Two and a Half has doubled in the last four years. This is, this is, it's unprecedented, uncertain time. We're not proposing an operational override. We know Chelmsford's history. We're dealing with the financial constraints. We're doing everything we can, but, but what we're presenting to you this evening is not a level service budget. We've adopted our budget a few, a few weeks ago for a presentation to the Select Board and Finance Committee. We've made some difficult choices at that time, and we'll get into those later as we get into the operating budget this evening. That concludes my remarks. Mr. Moderator, Article One.
Thank you. Okay, Article Two is the first article of the consent agenda, so I'm going to entertain a motion that you approve, tentatively the consent agenda so that the town manager can present all those articles. If you decide you want to add another or remove some, you certainly will have the opportunity to do that. So, I'm going to entertain a motion to include the following articles in the consent agenda, two, seven, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-five, thirty-three, and thirty-four. Do I have, do I hear a second? Okay. Do we have a, a, you vote on that? The motion passes, one hundred and thirty-three in favors, six opposed, one abstention. So, Mr. Manager, will you start with the consent agenda?
Okay, the first article, and forgive me, most of them are in order, but we will have to flip through the presentation at some time. The first article under consent agenda is Article Two, which is the adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 operating budget, which is the operating budget that is for the fiscal year that we're going to close in the next two months. Again, this budget was, was adopted a year ago and began last July first. We're seeking a total of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars under the article, and it's for the following four line items you see printed on the screen. Municipal administration expenses, one twenty-four thousand, five hundred, twenty-one thousand public safety personnel services, two hundred thousand public safety expenses, and community services expenses, two thousand dollars. Just to give you a little detail, in the municipal administration expenses, the biggest overrun or cost factor we need to address is legal services. We are seeking additional hundred thousand dollars for, for the town's legal costs for operations. This has been, in my eighteen years now in the town, this has been probably the most heavily utilized legal services year, and the first time we've overrun the budget for legal services. And we, we had some transition issues in terms of new town council, new, new contracts, new, new form of business, as well as some pent-up demand, quite frankly, with the transition to new council, in which department heads had a lot of efforts to bring forward at the beginning of the fiscal year, but things that were held back with the change of council, as well as the breadth and expertise that new council brought to the community. We've also had some significant land use cases before the town's land use boards, most notably the planning board, with the Hildreth subdivision, as well as the Board of Appeals with forty-B projects, as well as forty-B applications that have come before the Select Board for project eligibility status. There were four of those during the past year. We've also been dealing with the ongoing issues and enhancing our efforts regarding the ledge road, commercial trucking issues. And we've also had to deal with bylaw developments, including the most recently special town meeting back in January, really with the ADU law. So, again, these, we've really been an extraordinary period. Under the issue of human resources professional development, that is there as we have a new human resources director. Our longtime human resource director stepped down after over thirty years of service to the town, and we brought in a new person into the position, and basically, we've been training and bringing this person and up to speed with the new position, and overall, it's gone remarkably well. But you have this training and certifications and, and meetings that you just don't, you wouldn't have had with a, with a, with a tended person, you know, in, in a minor budget that was generally about twenty-three hundred dollars in expenses for a current year. And then conservation reservation management, that was primarily, we had issues with a survey of a conservation parcel over here at Freeman Lake, as well as some tree removal on conservation land that was impacting abutting residential property owners. Under public safety, personnel services, that's a seal of weights and measures, twenty-one thousand. What happened there was, we've been running for the last several years our seal of weights and measures program through the Northern Middlesex Council of Government through a revolving fund. This past September, the Northern Middlesex Council of Government, three months into the fiscal year, announced that they were terminating that service, and therefore, the communities had to seek their own resources and operation for seal of weights and measures. Seal of weights and measures are the, is the inspectors who go out and they test the scales at delis and supermarkets, and, and they also test the gas pumps at gas stations, they test price scanners at stores and so forth. And so, basically, it's inspectional services called for under state law. So, what we had to do here is we had to pivot from the revolving fund, and we've now formed a consortium where we're sharing an individual with the towns of Westford and Tewksbury for this service. So, that was the transition cost for the service, and that no longer be by a, by a revolving fund, but is now part of the operating budget. And then in the public safety expenses in the police department, we've had to deal with the replacement equipment for new police vehicles. Unfortunately, the new style of the vehicles, the equipment and packages isn't always compatible, and there was some cost with replacement of the vehicles, as well as two vehicles that were damaged by automobile accidents that had to be replaced with new equipment, again, with different types of vehicles. Contracted services, that had to do with some professional services that were needed to assist in the, in the department's operations. That was unforeseen under recruitment supplies. That has to do with, with really has been an extraordinary turnover in the personnel of the police department, having to do primarily with the, with the retirements in the department. We have a wave of officers who were hired during the Clinton years, during the policing grants, that sort of are retiring as a group, as well as some attrition in the department. And so, that was an extraordinary period of activity, because we know that by law, officers can work till age sixty-five, and they often reach retirement maximum at age fifty-seven, so we don't quite know when they will choose to leave. This has been an extraordinary year. And then, again, minor costs under dues and subscriptions. And then similarly, in the fire department, we had some overruns for utilities in terms of the, you know, electricity and natural gas costs for the five stations, vehicle maintenance for the, for the apparatus of our fire equipment, and then equipment, as you can see listed there, in terms of new Scott air packs, hoses, nozzles, radio repairs, as well as some minor overruns in building maintenance. And then the last one was for this building we're in this evening, the senior center. We're having some overruns in the utility budget, part of which was really due to the new upgrades that we have in the HVAC system, which are, which are operational and working, but that it does, it did draw, you can see, a minor amount of additional cost from the electricity budget. So, with that, Mr. Moderator, that concludes my remarks under Article Two. I'll now move on to Article Seven, which is the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. And forgive us as we get to that slide. Article Seven is the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. We are, again, maintaining that fund in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to meet extraordinary and unforeseen expenses that may arise during the course of the year. Outside of town meeting, it's utilized by the Finance Committee for, again, extraordinary unforeseen expenses. Or in the case like this, where we have overruns, they're held till Spring Town Meeting, and it's used as a funding source, as in this case, we are running a hundred and sixty-two point four million dollar budget, and for the upcoming year, it'd be a hundred and sixty-eight million dollar operating budget. So, that's Article Seven. Moving quickly to Article Nine, which is past the capital budget on the slides. It's the first of the enterprise funds. This is the sewer enterprise, enterprise fund. You can see the budget total is five point six million dollars. The enterprise fund is basically a separate accounting mechanism where the town has adopted this since the onset of the sewer operations, where all revenues that go from this, come from the sewer, expenses and billings, and all accounting and all expenses are kept within a separate fund. It's not dispersed through the entire town budget. It stays as a separate reporting entity. This year, the sewer enterprise budget increases by just over a quarter of a million dollars, or four point eight, two percent, and that two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars is driven, as you can see on the slide, primarily by an increase of ten percent to the Greater Lowell Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is owned by the City of Lowell, which we're assessed as a user. So, our, our increases on that are ten, are ten percent or two hundred thousand dollars. We're told that that's going to be the norm in the years ahead. Many of you may be aware, the City of Lowell is making significant upgrades in its wastewater treatment plant as, because of the combined sewer overflow system. Our sewer wastewater that leaves Chelmsford runs through the parts, through, all the way across Lowell, basically from the Chelmsford Town Line to almost the Drakea Town Line at the treatment plant. So, we're assessing a portion of the capital cost because our, our flow is running through that system. And then the debt service in the sewer enterprise fund increases by ninety-two percent, ninety-two thousand. We now move to Article Twelve. I'm sorry, whoop, going back to Article, Article Ten, I'm sorry. Article Ten is the stormwater, which is the mirror enterprise fund from sewer, because stormwater is, you may be aware, is a more recent one, within the last several years. It's a surcharge on your sewer bills. The stormwater enterprise fund is one point six, seven million dollars. The increase is just under five percent. The, basically, it's, it's for the cost of operating the miles of, of our drain system and catch basins and culverts and detention ponds, in accordance with federal and state law. The increase is primarily driven to personnel costs within the stormwater division. Now, moving on to Article Twelve, is we go into additional enterprise funds. These are more straightforward. This is the Forum Ice Rink. It's level funded at sixty-five thousand dollars per year. As you, you may be aware, the town contracts with a ice rink management company through competitive procurement process to operate the Chelmsford Forum. Basically, it means that the forum operates independently and outside of the property tax levy, so basically, the revenues that come in from the management fee are what fund the ongoing investments and operations within the forum. So, that's the stormwater, I'm sorry, the Forum Ice Rink. We now move on to the public access and government access cable-related enterprise fund, or the Chelmsford Telemedia, as you commonly know it. That's, as you see, is, is almost a five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar enterprise fund. This is essentially level funded. The budget is actually point nine-eight percent less than the current year, or fifty-seven hundred dollars. This enterprise fund is funded from the assessment on Comcast and Verizon cable television bills, and despite the fact that people are cutting the cord, cable access revenues have remained within budgeted forecasted levels. So, again, it's a level service budget. That's basically level dollar as well. We now move on to Article Fourteen, which is the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. That's for the Chelmsford Country Club. That's a thirty thousand dollar enterprise fund, similarly to level dollar from the previous year, similar to the Forum, the Ice Rink. The golf course is, again, contracted out and run by a professional golf course management company that operates our facility, as well as a number of other facilities across the Commonwealth. And again, it's outside of the, the town's property tax levy. We now move on to Article Fifteen, which is the annual appropriation of departmental revolving funds. Under the state law, we are required every year to vote the dollar amounts under these departmental revolving funds that you see listed on the screen. They're the same dollar amounts that we had last year, and basically, it's for services that are self-funded, that stand alone, so, such as the senior citizen trip program. So, the senior center here offers a trip for elders to go, wherever they're going. They take money in, they're allowed, under the state law, under this revolving fund, to expend those monies directly, and all we have to do is vote the cap on that fund in a given year. And, and again, money that's left over stays in, stays in the fund. Similar with the senior citizen respite care program that's operated out of this building. People who pay to have the respite care program for their loved ones, then, then those revenues are directly received, accounted for by the town accountant, and then the expenses are paid for to operate that program. And then there are others like the police cruiser equipment grant. We take the revenue from the trade-in of, of police cruisers that are going out of the rotation, and those monies from that sale go to equip future cruisers. And similarly, you can see with the cemetery wreaths and so forth. And so, again, this is a perfunctory one, but until the legislature changes it, we have to vote it every year. Article Sixteen is the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund. This request at this town meeting is for fifty thousand dollars. Again, revenue comes from the sale of graves and lots that, perpetual care that one buys for interment at the cemetery, and the proposed funds, this, this town meeting are used to pave and repair drainage structures at the West Chelmsford Cemetery, and to remove older hazardous trees throughout all of the six cemeteries in the town. We now move on to Article Twenty-five, which is the Community Preservation Fund, annual article. And this, the blanket article is, is funded every Spring Town Meeting. Here, we, we appropriate the funds to the Community Preservation Fund Reserve, appropriate fifty thousand dollars for their administrative expenses, and appropriate the reserves in accordance with state law. For the current fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year, the forecast is one point five, nine million in Community Preservation Fund surcharge. That's the one and a half percent Community Preservation Fund surcharge that's been on the property tax bills. We project, as you can see, a modest amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of state revenue that comes from the deed excise tax that's distributed across the Commonwealth to communities who participate in this program. Obviously, with not many real estate recordings and so forth, there's not as much state revenue that's coming out of this program. So, at this point, we anticipate two hundred and fifty thousand, or a total of one point eight million dollars. We're required to set aside, under the provisions of the Community Preservation Act, ten percent to the open space, historical and community housing allocation, and then we're budgeting two hundred and fifty thousand for the general budgeted reserve. And then we have to fund the debt service. You can see, these are projects that were previously approved by the town and are legal obligations of the town, funded from the Community Preservation Act revenues. In the column on the far right, it indicates the year of the final payment of those projects. So, for example, the Roberts Field, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond, this year's debt service is forty-three thousand, six hundred, is paid, it'll be paid off entirely in 2028. And it's similarly, Coolest Farm is much greater amount, paid off in 2039, and we're projecting a later article this evening for the underground utility project that will be paid off in that will be paid off in 2035. And then the final two articles are Thirty-four and Thirty-five, the end of the warrant. The Thirty-four is an easement for, we'll get to it.
Paul, Thirty-three and Thirty-four.
I'm sorry, Thirty-three and Thirty-four, I'm sorry. Thirty-three and Thirty-four. Thirty-three is an easement for installation of our electric vehicle charging stations. There we go. We received a $2.24 million grant through our Public Works Director, Christine Clancy, and her staff for fast charging, electric vehicle charging stations, at no cost to the town. But because these charging stations are located on town property, at the town offices, the Adams Library, the senior center, the Vinyl Square on the town common, as well as Roberts Field, the Select Board doesn't have the authority independently, as they would for any other work in the right of way. So we need the town meeting to approve easements to allow the installation of these stations on town properties. And you, I know the pictures are hard to see, but there's one outside of this building, the senior center, similarly at the edge of the parking lot at Roberts Field, the municipal lot in Vinyl Square, the Adams Library, and the town offices. And then final article is a street acceptance on Woodbine Street. Woodbine Street is a right-of-way, if you, if you go down to Market Basket on Chelmsford Street, heading towards Lowell, it will be on your left. So if you look at the map, at the end of the, at the end of the plaza there, you would be your Market Basket Plaza. When the, where this comes from is when the DPW was out doing work on there, we came across that a portion of the roadway was not accepted. Very similar to when we did work a year ago, you may recall, for Parkhurst, we found out that portion of the roadway wasn't accepted. And the reason we bring it to you for acceptance is by adding, the work's done, and the reason by adding it to our acceptance list is that increases the amount of road length, which determines how much additional monies we can get from Chapter Ninety, from the state gasoline tax. That concludes the presentation on the consent agenda, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the FinCom have a recommendation on the consent agenda?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends Articles Two, Seven, Nine, Ten, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Twenty-five, Thirty-three, and Thirty-four.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Articles Two, Seven, Nine, Ten, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Twenty-five, Thirty-three, and Thirty-four.
Okay. Now you have an opportunity to ask questions about any of those articles, or if you think that they should, something shouldn't be there.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Badriu Pillipun Presint Levin. Through you to the presenter. Paul, simple question, it's a dumb question, on a very small amount, but I will still ask it. On Article Two amendments, the amended budget, especially on the utilities, you explained on the senior center utilities, it's only $2,000, I'm not making a big deal, I'm not going to ask that. But you gave a reason, explanation, that it was because of the HVAC system. So I'm trying to understand, and it doesn't have to be answered right now, maybe you go back and mail back, but I want to have an answer on record as to what the reason was. It's the new equipment. Is it the increase in the cost of these fuel supply, or the electricity or natural gas, and/or the increase in heating degree days or the operational hours? I want to try and get an understanding of that.
I think the answer is both. What happens is, when you install a new HVAC system, they're more efficient, but in the case like this where they're doing air exchange, they're also running and operating more because you're running, you're running the air in and out of the building more frequently. So we have more fuel, we have more fuel-efficient electric service in terms of the appliance. You've also had an increase, as you noted, in the electricity pricing, but at the same time, you're also drawing upon that because you're utilizing more air exchange, and so that's the combination. So when you sum it all up, it came out to a slight overage. And you're right, it does vary on heating days and so forth, which is, you know, variable. And this was actually a colder March. And the other problem is, and quite frankly, we would have been, we would have made it, but the month of February was a terrible solar month. And why I mention that is, with town meeting approval, there's solar panels on this building, and that solar electricity is less expensive than the electricity we receive from the grid. But the month of February was not only snowy, it was also a very overcast month. And I remember the call that it came to myself and the Finance Director and the town accountant from this, director of this facility, saying, "I can't believe I just saw my utility bill for the month of February for electricity," and that was part of the, you know, the overage that it all, I think but for that, we probably would have been awash.
Understood. I just wanted to clarify the commentary a little bit, make sure that it was on record there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no one else, we'll take a vote on the consent agenda. Yes is to approve the consent agenda. No is to reject it. And abstain means that you haven't decided.
... tend to come and go pretty quickly. As you can see, only a couple of may votes. They are typically articles that come before town meeting every year, in some form or another, often with pretty much the same wording. Or they involve a relatively new wrinkle called enterprise funds, where basically, like the golf course, it's a closed box. The income and the expenses are isolated.
And now we move on to Article Three, which is Neshoba Valley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Three is the Neshoba Valley Technical School District Fiscal Year 2026 Assessment. The presentation this evening is going to be made by Neshoba Valley District School Committee Member Lawrence McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I'm here as one of your representatives on the Neshoba Tech School Committee, along with Pat Wojcisz, Jody Murphy, and our newest member, Dr. Jasmine Waddell, who can't be here tonight. I'm joined by Assistant Business Manager Andreas Tahada, and Curriculum Director Gabriella White. Neshoba Tech is Chelmsford's skill-focused public high school. Sorry. As you see here, the Chapter Seventy-four tech programs, they're driven by labor data and future needs of the economy. They're very future-focused, and they break down construction and transportation, health and services, and arts and technology. These Chapter Seventy-four programs support the economy of the future. The town enrollment, the percentage of the town, did I go too far? Nope. Chelmsford has 27 and a half percent of the students at Neshoba Tech, which currently is 210 students. That's, the number of students for Neshoba Tech is up over last year, but slightly down for Chelmsford. You see that the high watermark was 313 students long ago. The current capital projects, we try to maintain an over 50-year-old building, which I believe is in excellent shape. But the current programs, a lot of it is work that's going on on the fire suppression system. As you've heard at previous town meetings, we are working to update this section by section, not only for financial reasons, but this work is very disruptive and is done in the summer. And we do about as big a chunk as we can do each summer, and that's ongoing work. In the last several years, Neshoba Tech has competed for and won over $7 million of competitive workforce skills grants. That has helped us on capital projects, because whenever we are working on updating and renovating an area, we try to do the HVAC or the fire suppression system, or whatever we can, that would later be taken in a capital project as part of that grant. These, these grants help enormously on the budget. So the fire suppression system is pretty much the only capital project we currently have in this budget. But if future capital needs, we're going to need to continue to finish the fire suppression system. We have some vans that need to be replaced, exterior doors and windows, and HVAC. The budget drivers are the budget drivers that are, actually, if I can go back one minute to the capital needs, we are, we have applied for an MSBA grant to try to pick up some of this work for HVAC doors and windows. That application has just gone in. We don't know what the outcome is. We probably, or possibly won't know for as much as a year. But this would be good, because it would allow us to do a lot of the work all at once. Also, if you recall from previous town meetings, Neshoba Tech has debt that is going to retire in the not-too-distant future. So the work that we would take on for these renovations would be debt that would be rolling on, as other debt would be rolling off. There's nothing to vote on for that tonight, just give you a preview for the future. The budget drivers and considerations, well, tell me if you've heard this one, inflation, aging buildings. We do our best to be good stewards of the facility. I like to think that Neshoba Tech and the other vocational technical schools are gems in the Commonwealth and the education system and helping the economy, but, you know, you have to maintain them. I will say that there was $422,000 in equipment costs that were considered for this budget that did not make it into this budget. Those will be either pushed to a future budget, or perhaps we'll be able to get that equipment through grants or other means. So here is the, here is the budget by State Function Code. And you can see that the majority, more than 80 percent, is all about student services, as one would expect. The sources for the budget, 67 percent of the budget comes from town assessments. This is within 1 or 2 percent of what it was last year. The remainder comes from Chapter Seventy. As we've discussed previously, Chapter Seventy is a state formula that applies differently to different towns based on a number of factors. This was calculated by the state a while ago. I do not know off the top of my head the last time this was updated, but in the past, I've been asked, why is the assessment for Chelmsford different per student than for other towns in Neshoba Tech? And the answer is, it's the state formula. And I will say that regional transportation is being reimbursed slightly higher than it was in previous years, so that's some good news. And the rest comes from, 3 percent comes from excess and deficiencies. So here is the proposed assessments by member towns. I hope everyone can see this, it looks like it's cut off. Oh, it's better up there. So Neshoba Tech is part of an eight-town regional district. As you know, regional districts are different than town schools. And the third column is not a number calculated by Neshoba Tech. That's a number that comes from the state formula, of which I'm not an expert. The total assessment comparison between the FY25 and the FY26 budget, you can see that that is going up, $499,274 for the town's minimum contribution, for an increase of And that is for all eight towns combined, that's not Chelmsford's number. Chelmsford's number is going up $16,559, for a total of $4,536,30. I just want to point out that in the evening, there are these career and technical initiative programs that are totally funded outside of the budget. We get a lot of support from Mass Hire and the state. These programs help unemployed and underemployed people get job skills and good jobs. And if you know anybody who could take advantage of that, they should call the school. Lastly, there are these public services at Neshoba Tech, including the award-winning culinary arts program, and the award-winning Cosmos Salon, which was just renovated. So, Mr. Moderator, that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Okay. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation regarding the Neshoba Valley Technical High School budget?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article Three.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article Three.
And does the Neshoba Valley Technical High School's School Committee have a recommendation on their own budget?
The Neshoba Tech District School Committee unanimously supports the budget.
All right. Now's an opportunity to ask questions, if you have any. If not, we'll vote on the Neshoba Valley Technical High School budget.
In the current era, this Neshoba Valley budget has gone through very smoothly for a number of years. It wasn't always that way, roughly 10 to 12 years ago. It was a continuous article of contention with a lot of friction between the existing superintendent for Neshoba Valley and the town meeting representatives. As has been pointed out, Chelmsford sends a substantial number of students to Neshoba Tech.
Good job, Mr. McDonald, it's unanimous. 141 in favor. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, Article Four is the funding article for the Chelmsford Public Schools' Fiscal Year 2026 operating budget. The presentation we've made by Dr. Lang, our Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, town meeting reps. Hope you are well. Tonight, before you, you have the Chelmsford Public Schools' operating budget for fiscal '26. As Town Manager Cohen had referenced earlier in the remarks, this is a challenging year budget-wise for both, I think, the town departments putting budgets together, as well as the school department. Dating back from the fall, when we actually took a look at our, we always start with a level service budget for the following year, it was approximately a three-and-a-half million dollar increase. And that would take into consideration all of our personnel and non-personnel line items. We do, unlike the town, in our budget, we do include revenue for anticipated contract increases in our budget, so we'll talk about that a little bit later on tonight. We have some ordinary increases for special education, regular education, transportation that we're under contract for. So overall, it was going to be about a three-and-a-half million dollar increase, just to provide level services. So as I walk through some of the slides, you will see where we've had to make some reductions to be able to kind of bring that into line with the final recommendation. So a couple of the budget assumptions that come into place is, we have, as we have for the last number of years, we always take a look at our district strategic plan, and we make sure that the budget is very much aligned to that document. We want to make sure our money is aligned to our goals and priorities for the coming year. We use available offsets to try to help, and we had to do that a little bit more this year, as you'll see a little bit later on, than we had previously. But we utilize circuit breaker reimbursement that we get from the state to help offset some of our special education costs. Some school choice funds, which we receive when we allow students not from Chelmsford into some of our some of our schools. And then we also, we're a member district at Valley Collaborative, and we receive a revenue offset from Valley Collaborative, so that's also included in our, in our budget for next year fiscal '26. As I mentioned earlier, contract negotiations, we do have a set aside already included in the budget for our negotiations. All of our employee contracts with our different collective bargaining groups expire June 30th, so the school committee subcommittees are well underway negotiating with all of our groups, our teachers, our support staff, administrators right down the line. Hopefully have contracts in place before we go back to our school, but we do have a set aside for that. I am proud of the budget that you have before you tonight. We worked very hard. Our building administrators, our department coordinators, school committees, spent a lot of time looking at our budget to really see exactly where we're spending the money, how it's impacting kids in the classroom. Our budget in fiscal '26 still maintains the integrity of our programs and services that we offer the current year, next year. As I've done in previous years, we kept the school committee, the school department budget format similar, so hopefully it's easy for you to follow along. We have taken several assumptions and considerations when we put the budget together as far as we know if a teacher is retiring, a new teacher coming in is likely going to come in at a lesser step, so we've already built these assumptions into the bottom line. We have traditionally been budgeting master step three. Normally, a teacher would retire if they've been with the district for a long time at step 10, 11, or 12. So we've already built those assumptions into the budget to make sure that we really are accounting for everything that we possibly can. We didn't really have the luxury this year of adding additional positions to the budget. You'll actually see our FTE is down, but we do still have some programs that we have to maintain and we have to expand upon. Three years ago, at the middle school level, we started a language-based program. It started at Parker. It's now at McCarthy. It's a specialized program for some of our students who need some really intensive reading skills. So we do have an addition of an eighth-grade teacher to support that program, and this will be the fourth and final year that we've had to add staffing to that program. But we're actually compensating for that additional position by not funding a retiring reading teacher at the school. So it's basically, it's a, I wanted to note it because we put a lot of time and effort into creating this program, and we're going to maintain it. We're going to keep it through eighth grade, but we're actually funding it through not funding a different position. It's not a net addition. It's a net neutral to the budget. Also, at McCarthy, if you recall, three, two years ago, we combined our two middle schools in town, so that Parker now services all grade five and six students, and McCarthy services all seventh and eighth-grade students. We have an additional supervisor students position to help with some of our just management and control of our school. And we funded that through offsetting elimination of a couple of positions within the building. So again, no adds. FTE-wise, it's actually results in a couple of less positions in the district, but we're able to add that resource that we really do think is needed at the school. This budget does maintain our one-on-one computer initiative. All new students coming to the district in grades five and then nine receive a new district issued Chromebook. It makes it across the board. Everyone has the same device. Everyone has the same access during the school day at home, so that's included in this budget. And we actually use our school choice revenue as an offset for that, so it doesn't actually directly impact the local budget, but we use school choice funding for that. A couple of the things we did have to do to kind of get to that, bridge that gap between, we actually work from the bottom up on this one. So the town budget does have a $1.77 million increase for the schools. We've continued to maintain the Valley Collaborative revenue offset. I've anticipated it to be about $300,000 for next year in that budget. We're allocating an additional $1 million of circuit breaker revenue to help bridge that gap to get to the $3.5 million we needed. We're also going to reallocate the school nutrition director salary, which is currently on the local budget. We're going to move that on to the school nutrition revolving fund. It is an allowable cost, and we do have a sufficient reserve to be able to make that move and still fund it. We did have to eliminate 12 of our part-time tutoring positions in the budget, and that was about a $1.5 million offset that we had to do to make the numbers all come into line. Several of those positions are currently vacant. We've still had a very difficult time post-COVID, filling some of those specialty part-time positions, so it's actually not impacting individuals, but we're making that adjustment to really balance the budget and bring it in at the request before you. So I am confident in the budget process. I'm confident in the budget we put before you this evening. I would recommend that the town meeting support $75,650,000 allocation for the Chelmsford Public Schools fiscal '26 budget. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 4.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 4.
School Committee have a recommendation?
The School Committee unanimously approved the budget.
Thank you. Opportunity for questions, discussion? There being none, we will vote on the Chelmsford Public School budget.
Longtime watchers of the town meeting proceedings will be, no doubt, stunned by the rapidity with which the school budget has gone through, given that it is a tight budget, carefully crafted, but ultimately resulting in small losses in personnel. And it's a testimony to the care that the superintendent and the school committee go through to prepare something that the town
The article passes 135 in favor, 2 opposed, no abstentions.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Article 6 is the general government fiscal year 2026 operating budget. The town votes operating budget by line items. You see them printed in your handout and displayed here on the screen. For the overview of the operating budget, it's $168.4 million. Again, that's all-inclusive, including the school department, as well as the Neshoba Tech assessment. The predominant funding source is the property tax levy, so 76% of the operating budget, or $129 million, comes from the property tax levy at levy capacity. We're anticipating $22.4 million in state aid, just over $13 million in local receipts, and $4 million from other miscellaneous funds. As you just adopted, the Chelmsford Public Schools budget is $75.65 million. That went up by 2.4% or $1.774 million in terms of the funding level. The other departmental budgets, meaning the general government, is $38.3 million. The proposed increase there is $222,000 or 0.58%, but the asterisk, as was noted by Dr. Lang, in the school budget, under state law, the town funds the school budget, and they, when they reach collective bargaining agreements, they then independently, upon ratification, disperse the money to the labor groups that are represented in the schools. Under state law and municipal government, when the town adopts a collective bargaining agreement with a organized labor group, that budget has to come to town meeting for funding approval, and then the town meeting funds the first year operating cost of that budget. It then gets ratified, and actually, you'll see some of that in the next article, Article 6. But we cannot, under the town bylaws, pre-fund the budgets in anticipation of contract settlements because they're unknown. So in the article under this motion, the increase is only 0.58%. Benefits and insurance is $36 million. You can see that benefits and insurance almost equals now the total operating budget for the town departmental budgets, aside from the schools, meaning police, fire, DPW, the library, this building. And you can see the increase there is extraordinary. It's $4 million, certainly exceeding that of anything else in the budget growth, or 12.47%. Our debt service budget is $10.4 million, a decrease of $159,000 of total, meaning excluded and non-excluded debt, or a decrease of 1.5%. In fact, the town's existing debt outstanding right now is down to only $54 million. So we're running a $168 million budget, and as we stand currently, we have $54.4 million total debt. Now, obviously, that's going to change in the future when we construct fire stations and we bond for a new middle school, if the town chooses to do that. But right now, we're well-positioned in terms of our debt moving forward. Primarily, our debt service budget funds our annual capital plans, and again, you'll be hearing that later this evening. And again, we hate to dwell upon it because it is a reality. The biggest driver, almost $3 million, is health insurance premiums. We are basically on a pay-as-you-go basis, and we're rated and paying on our claims history. And we have the benchmark plan under health insurance. We insure almost 1,000 retirees and over 600 active employees between the town and the schools, and it's a major cost driver. And when I say we're at the benchmark plan, meaning we can't, under the provisions of state law, unilaterally reduce the assessment below what's called the state benchmark of health insurance under what's called the Group Insurance Commission that the state offers to its state employees. And therefore, you know, we're basically at that cost, and we know the cost drivers in health insurance, much like you see them in terms of coming out of COVID, what was expected to be a bounce and then a decline in utilization. We've seen increased utilization in health plans. We've also seen legislative efforts to address the cost of prescription drugs to those who need them for insulin and other cares. Obviously, those costs get shifted into somewhere, and they end up getting shifted into the premiums, which the town pays 75% for active employees. The employees pay 25%, and then for retirees, it's a 63-37 split. And our retirement assessment, that again, is based on the town's actual experience. Every two years, Middlesex County Retirement System does an actuarial assessment of our retirement requirements. Right now, the town, under the state law, we have $120 million unfunded pension liability that is due to be paid off in 2037, and so we're obviously within just over a decade of that. And so the increase is $1 million, and of the total, $13 million that we're paying to the retirement system for our retirement assessment, $12 million of that is towards the unfunded liability that we've inherited from previous generations, where they transitioned from a pay-as-you-go system to a fully-funded system. Our non-excluded debt service, I mentioned, that is increasing despite our overall debt decreasing. Our employee compensation, again, with the asterisk because it doesn't include collective bargaining, it's for the non-union employees. Solid waste and recycling is a fixed cost. We're under contract with our collectors for solid waste and recycling, as well as the facility where these, your solid waste is converted to electricity. Those have inflationary increases in their contracts. And then your Medicare tax is basically your tax on payroll under federal and state law. So as I mentioned earlier, the budget is not a level service budget. There are five full-time positions that you see listed there that were in the budget this current year that are not funded in the upcoming fiscal year budget. We actually had to lay off three people two months ago when we released this budget. There are also four part-time positions in various departments that you can see there that are not funded in this budget. And therefore, the budget does not include funding for Sunday hours at the Chelmsford Public Library. However, the library trustees are utilizing their grant monies and will keep the library open on Sundays. So similar to what, as Dr. Lang described, where they can use some grant monies to supplant what had been funded into the operating budget, that's what's going to take place there. We no longer will have funding for lifeguards at the town beaches, which ended the midpoint of last summer. One of the two hazardous waste collection days will be removed from the upcoming year's budget, and we're looking at how many copies we need to print of the annual town report in this digital era. Similarly, there were other meritorious requests that came in, similar, as Dr. Lang noted, in the school department. There are substantial worthy needs that can't be met in this budget, such as additional police officers to enhance traffic safety, additional firefighters to increase apparatus staffing levels, and lieutenant positions in the fire department to enhance operational safety, additional DPW labor positions to improve the conditions of the town's roads, parkways, and sidewalks, and a safety specialist to improve workplace safety. So with that, Mr. Moderator, that concludes the presentation of the general government operating budget.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 5.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 5.
Now's an opportunity to discuss the general operating budget.
Alvin Dreymond, Precinct 7. This is just a number question. Back on page 50, you have a 12.5% in benefits and insurance. Now, you can't do anything about that. And public schools went up 2.4%. If, but I suspect a pretty high percentage of that money is going to pay for school employees' benefits. If that were to be included into the additional cost for the public schools, give a rough estimate what percentage that would be of an increase?
Roughly, the school department employs about twice as many employees as the general government of the town. So I don't know what the calculation is, but it would increase.
So about 8% would be being added to the other direction? Okay.
Yeah, it would be close to that. And but the challenge, what you've got to understand with benefits and also the operational thing is, one of the things I failed to mention in this is, we're also in a very tight labor market. And the problem is, if you don't provide sufficient benefits or adequate pay, you're not going to be able to retain employees or attract employees. And that's a significant challenge as we look going forward as to how we're going to operate as a community. And so that's the box that we're in, is inflation in terms of services and benefits, but also a very challenging labor market. And the challenge is, it's not just, oh, replace them with another lesser-cost person. The transaction cost of trying to fill positions, if you can find people, is a significant cost to the system. So you're correct. The real cost is greater if you were to allocate by sector, but under mass law, we fund the benefits and insurance under the general operating department of the town.
Understood. It was really just a number question, not challenging those expenses nor the cost of labor. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Letina, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, through you to the town manager. How much of this is excise tax? I notice there's a local receipts. Is that excise tax too for our cars?
Yeah, that comes in your local receipts. It's about $12 million is your motor vehicle excise tax. So basically, $12 million out of our $168 million is motor vehicle excise tax.
Pennies. Question, are we interested or not interested in pursuing residents that have New Hampshire plates and are parked in our town or estate for more than 30 days? Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. Could we please do that?
We're always interested. The challenge is, is being able to identify those people who have vehicles that are licensed out of plate. And it's not quite as simple as just going to a parking lot, whether it's a residential development or business development where they have plates, because you don't know who the people are and what their circumstances are, whether they're military people, whether they're visiting people. But in those cases where somebody could document, you know, that somebody is illegally registering a vehicle out of state, ourselves and the registry would gladly go after those people. But it does create a considerable effort. And so, sure, we're interested, but it's not, it's not easy to obtain.
Just our high-density housing areas, Mr. Moderator, are an easy, quick drive-through. There's 20 in my neighborhood just by a simple count, and I'd be happy to put a welcome-to-Chelmsford sign on the car with an application to Massachusetts.
There you go. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? There being none, we will vote on the general operating budget.
As the town manager, Cohen, outlined in his initial presentation, we are likely in for some difficult fiscal times, and not just the fiscal 2026 period, but also in the years beyond that. And challenging to see how budgets can be kept at a level where the services are not
The article passes 137 in favor, 1 opposed, no abstentions. Article 6?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 6 is funding for collective bargaining agreements. Under this article, we're seeking funding for three collective bargaining agreements with three police unions. The commanding officers' union, the superior officers' union, and the patrol officers' union, as presented on the screen. Little bit of background on this. This past year, almost just about a year ago, the police lieutenants formed their own bargaining unit, which is known as the Commanding Officers Association. And so there's a separate unit called And so there's a separate unit called that. The superior name was already taken by the sergeants, so they came up with the Commanding Officers Association. And why that matters is, is we had to start basically with a clean sheet of paper because it's a newly-formed union. And so we basically sat down with them over the last several months and worked a contract. Now, what we did use is, we used the Superior Officers/Sergeants Union as sort of the template for the new agreement, because in all of our other comparable communities, the Superior Officers Unions tended to consist of the lieutenants and the sergeants. So here, they're separate unions, but we used the sergeants' agreement as the template, but recognizing that they had benefits as non-union employees that they were currently receiving, and trying to integrate those into a comprehensive and legible roadmap between three different bargaining groups in the police department, between the lieutenants, sergeants, and patrol, so that the police chief could be able to effectively run the department without using a roadmap and trying to figure out who can do what and how it works. So why that matters is, is that group formed, as I said, a year ago. So we needed to not only fund the three years going forward, which are synchronized as our choice with our labor unions, but we also have to fund the year that we're in now. And so that's why you see two lines under the July 1st to June 30th of '28. The current fiscal year, it's $37,931. And then the first year of the upcoming three-year cycle is $80,787. And then you can see the first year for the Superior Officers Association is $46,000, roughly. And then the patrol officers, a much larger group, is over $300,000. We'll go into brief overview of the details of the agreements. As I mentioned, with the Commanding Officers Association, it's the initial contract document. The wage increases beyond what they were currently receiving as base pay is 2.5% for the current fiscal year that will be ending in two months, and then 2% for the upcoming three fiscal years. And then what the police receive is the new police reform legislation, the police officers' standard and training, or the post-commission that you often hear about. In Massachusetts, under bargaining, the police unions have been receiving a stipend for the new certification requirements under that law, which is roughly, over a three-year period, basically comes out to 6%. So again, we divide that over a four-year period to 1.5% per year under the provisions of that. And again, as I mentioned earlier, when we go into bargaining, whether it's, you know, as a community, we look at our labor market, we look at our comparable towns, we examine their contracts, we want to pay a competitive wage, not only to be fair to our employees, but under the new civil service reform, communities can now hire half of their employees that aren't on the civil service list. So that basically means that they can hire employees outside of their communities or their list from other towns. And so that means we could send an officer, and this happened to us not too long ago, we sent an officer for 24-week police academy, and while the officer was in doing our field training as a Chelmsford officer, he gave his notice and said, "I'm going to this community because look at the additional funding I can earn, that's significant," and he departed. You wish them well, and you understand it. And so that's why, as I was noting in my comments under the previous article, you have to be competitive despite the challenges. And again, it's more competitive now because it is more and more difficult, the list is longer and longer in terms of going down those lists to hire police officers. Under the Superior's or the Sergeants' Association contract, similar, we have a 2% increase per fiscal year, and then the post-certification. We also converted the longevity payment into a percentage amount, so that the dollar amount of the account longevity was converted to a percentage. And the reason for that was, was when we looked at our comparable communities, the longevity was all based on a percentage increase. Why that would matter to an employee is pretty obvious. If you increase their base wage, the longevity increases since it's a percentage, as opposed to separately bargaining from a dollar perspective increase. And then a minor change of the officer-in-charge compensation, additional $10 per shift from 70 to 80. Under the Patrol Officers Association, you can see a few more lines here, a little more detail, but it goes to, speaking of what we were dealing with, our entry wage was not competitive under the compensation analysis. And so what we ended up doing is, we deleted our step one, which is our entry wage, basically dropping the pay scale down by one, and then adding a new top fifth step or top step that was 6% above the existing top step. 6%? Well, where does that come from? Well, you saw the 6% from the other two groups, so we basically didn't give them a separate post-certification. We basically put the new step at 6% above. As you can see, the standard 2% wage increase to the pay schedule. We also modified the extra pay detail language to mirror that of the sergeants and lieutenants. Same thing with the educational incentive. What that is, is when the state bailed from funding the educational incentive, what was known as the Quinn Bill back in 2012, cities and towns were basically left with the choice of, do we retain this educational benefit? And again, what happened was, the market was dictating it because communities were keeping it. But at the time, we only implemented an educational incentive for bachelor's and associate's degree. We did not want to have an educational incentive for patrol officers for master's degree. Now, here we are in fiscal year '26. We look at our peers, and the officers who are coming here or considering coming here or deciding whether to stay here are saying, hey, wait a minute, I'm losing a 5%. And we do have a handful of officers who have an advanced degree, so that's why we had to bring it back. And then similarly, we also eliminated our requirement for patrol officers to maintain or acquire their EMT certification. That was not by fact other than the market, once again. We have people who either were having difficulty obtaining the EMT certification or didn't want to obtain the certification and were running risk of either not being able to retain them or recruit them. And so the incentive remains there, but it's no longer mandatory for the police. So that concludes the presentation under Article 6. There are three other groups that are not, contracts have not been reached with, that you may see at a future town meeting, which would be the Public Safety Dispatch, the library, and the firefighters' union. But that's what we have this evening under Article 6, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 6.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 6.
Okay. Time for any questions or discussion or debate. There being none, we will vote on the police collective bargaining agreements. Article 6. The article passes 134 in favor, three opposed, two abstentions, and now we move on to Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, Article 8 is the town's proposed fiscal year 2026 capital plan. I'm going to turn the podium over to John Souza, our Finance Director, who chairs the capital plan committee.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening. I'd like to provide you with an overview of the proposed capital plan for the coming fiscal year. And so you have, all of the projects are listed in the budget book and as well as the Finance Committee booklet, so I will go over it past that. And then just to look at the capital plan by functional area, you can see that the most significant investments are in the areas of school buildings, public works, and then community services, which focused on the library this year. And you can see the total of the plan is just over $5.9 million. And then here's a quick financing summary. So all of the projects that were recommended by the capital planning committee, it was 19, totaled just over $5.96 million. We have about just over $27,000 in recaptured funds, which are funds that we are able to take back from prior-year completed projects that were completed under budget. And then that leaves us with an amount of about $5.94 million that will be financed through long-term bonds for the town. I did want to mention that a capital plan of $5.96 million is about roughly 3.5% of the town's operating budget. So we'll start off going through each area. This project is going to look familiar to all of you because this is actually, this will improve the room that we're actually gathered in this evening at the senior center. This is the second phase of flooring at a cost of $170,000. And this flooring, you know, facilities and the custodial staff here at the senior center has done their best over the years to maintain it. It does, however, date back to the late 1980s when this facility was opened. If we then move to Adams, the next few projects are going to relate to our public libraries. So this project affects Adams Library. This is the replacement of the parking lot surface, as well as curbing, et cetera, striping at a cost of $365,000. The parking lot is over 20 years old, as you see on this slide, and the pavement is in rough condition in many of the areas. I did want to mention this project, as well as one that we're going to look at later for the police station. When this came before the capital planning committee, Public Works Director had indicated to us that if both of these parking lot projects are done in conjunction at the same time, the town will be able to save $50,000 or $25,000 per project. So this is the net price, less the $25,000. And that's due to, you know, economies of scale, contractor mobilization, savings in that area. The next library project relates to both libraries. This involves, every so many years, the library has to undertake a refresh or an upgrade of its computers, just because so many are used by the staff as well as patrons. And most of these will be replaced at Adams, but approximately four to six are for the McKay Library in North Chelmsford. And any older units will be repurposed to less intensive applications. I did want to mention, a question arose at the town meeting information session. This project will fund approximately 40 units, 22 desktops, 14 laptops, and four all-in-one machines, as well as software upgrades for those new units, and peripherals, and some network improvements. The next project involves Adams Library as well. This is Phase 2 of, it's a complete replacement of the building's HVAC system at a cost of $450,000. I did want to mention that the facilities department is currently undertaking a study of the system and having the design looked at it. And the study is expected to be completed this summer. And at this time, the facilities department is considering both gas-fired heating as well as electric systems. And once the study is completed, they'll be in a better position to know which direction to move in that, towards that. So the HVAC system received $450,000 in last year's capital plan. This would be Phase 2. Based on the cost that the Public Works Director is seeing, most likely, it will need another appropriation after this, but this will put us well on the way of completing this project in the future. Next, this is the parking lot project that I spoke of. This is the rear parking lot, the police station. As you can see, this lot is also in tough shape. It dates back to around 2004. The cost of this project is $405,000. And that will also include granite curbing, adjusting drainage structures, things like that related to the paving. Then we move on to a fire department within public safety. And this year, there is a command staff vehicle that's being replaced. You can see a picture of it. It's basically an SUV-type of vehicle. It carries a lot of specialized equipment, and it is a frontline piece of equipment used by the officer in charge, it seems. And so that's the reason that the cost on this is just under $112,000 for this vehicle. And moving on to public works, traditional infrastructure improvements. There is $375,000 budgeted for sidewalk improvements, as well as $425,000 budgeted for roadway improvements in the coming year. It's important to note that Public Works will be prioritizing both the sidewalk repairs and the roadway repairs. The roadway repairs will be based on the pavement management survey and database that they maintain, as well as the sidewalk assessment and master plan. And then we move to some public works equipment. So this next piece of equipment is, this is the replacement of a mini excavator. It's a 2013 unit. You can see with significant hours. The cost of this equipment is $130,000. And then the next piece, this is used primarily by the Highway Division. This is the replacement of an older 2003 sidewalk snow-clearing unit. You can see it has significant hours of service. Public Works also reported that had significant downtime in repairs, and that's the reason that the replacement is being looked at. The cost for this is $210,000. And then we have two municipal facilities truck replacements. And I just wanted to take a moment to explain that when you look at these two projects, you'll see that Public Facilities is looking to replace two older, high-mileage, light-duty trucks. And the reason that they're looking to replace them with three-quarter-ton pickups that are equipped for snow plowing is that you may have heard discussions here at town meeting and other meetings or committees around town that it's become increasingly difficult in the last several years to attract private snowplow contractors to assist with winter snow-clearing operations. So this will allow them to use, you know, town staff to accomplish this. And so you can see this, on this slide, we're replacing an older 2010 Chevy Colorado with a pickup equipped for plowing. And on the next slide, this replaces an older Ford Ranger vehicle with a three-quarter-ton pickup, also equipped for snow plowing. The next project on the municipal facilities involves ADA accessibility improvements at the town's parks, playgrounds, and open spaces. And these projects, the cost for this would be $150,000, and this is based on the recommendations that were developed from the town's updated open space and recreation master plan.
One minute.
Okay. And then we move on to municipal facilities. If you've ever visited the town office building, you know that many of the restrooms have a lot of older fixtures and are in need of restoration. This $180,000 budget will renovate two of the six restrooms under Phase 1. And you can see that the fixtures will be replaced, and as well as ADA code compliance upgrades will be made. They were designed using ARPA funds. From here, we move to school facilities. So this first project involves securing the entryways and emergency egress at the high school. The cost here is $877,500. The reason for that is, as you can see, this involves improvements at four elementary schools, as well as the Parker Middle School and High School. And the school department is going to continue to go forward. You can see in the photo, the whole idea of this is to have better security at the entrance point, have a containment area. And they've successfully done this at McCarthy Middle School, as well as the high school. And the project at the high school involves adding a, renovating a stairway or stairwell to provide better emergency egress, because it's been found during the times of, if you had to have a mass evacuation, there is an area, as the superintendent, Dr. Lane, explained, where you would have kind of bottlenecking trying to go out. So this will provide much better emergency egress.
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah, I think we have just about two or three more projects, Mr. Moderator. Center School, this is a partial roof replacement for $130,000. The next project is a water heater replacement at South Row at a cost of $60,000. The whole idea here is to replace this unit before it fails, so you want to do it on a planned basis. McCarthy Middle School, this involves $1 million for a partial roof replacement. You will see this project continuing. You will see this project continuing. The project is currently in design phase. The roof is 23 years old. And then the final project is a replacement of boilers at McCarthy Middle School for $700,000. And I did, a question came up at the town meeting information session. This will replace four existing gas-fired boilers with four high-efficiency gas-fired boilers. And a question came up on the, the fuel source. And so with McCarthy, you have to think about, the building opened in 1959. The facilities department is currently undergoing a study of this, the building's electrical distribution system. And because you have issues there, a lot of it's, a lot of it's original to the school, at this point, it would not support transitioning to a electrified heating source. But the electrical distribution center will be studied in the future. And I think that's the last, that's the last project.
Thank you. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 8.
The Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 8.
Any questions regarding the capital plan? There being none, we'll vote on the capital plan. Requires a two-thirds vote. The article passes 131 in favor, eight opposed, one abstention.
Article 11, Mr. Moderator, is a capital article pertaining to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. I'm going to turn the podium over to Public Works Director Christine Clancy.
Good evening. Tonight's request for the Stormwater Division under DPW is the request to purchase a new dump truck for the Stormwater Enterprise Division. So the Stormwater Enterprise is self-funded, as Manager Cohen describes, like, much like our sewer enterprise. So separate from capital requests, this is a separate article request. As you all might know, or may not know, the Stormwater Division is the newest division at DPW. It has grown over the past few years with more requirements under the MS4 permitting and related to drainage maintenance and repairs in town. So we've been, you know, we have a lot, we have 5,000 catch basin, about 150-plus miles of storm, storm drain infrastructure in town, over 325 culverts. We, just last year, you know, we purchased a CCB truck. We've been inspecting a lot of our mains in town. We, what we want to do is, we want to start doing more replacements in-house, as opposed to subbing it out. Right now, the way that it works, if we have to borrow a dump truck, Highway does have four dump trucks, so we do, we can use their vehicles, but they're also very busy and they're, you know, they're used on a daily basis as well. So as we grow the Stormwater Division, we want to be able to have that Stormwater dump truck in-house. The request is a 10-wheel, purchase a dump truck, about $290,000. It will take time to actually get it in, right now, we placed an order this July, we're looking at about 18 months to actually procure the, the vehicle. And then also, the advantage of having this in-house, we'd also be able to use this in the winter for snow operations, not necessarily sanding, but for, for plowing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 8, I'm sorry, 11.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 11.
Any questions? There being none, we will entertain a vote on the purchase of a 10-wheel dump truck for the DPW Stormwater Division. Article 11.
You might recall that this Stormwater Division was essentially imposed on the town and all towns in Massachusetts by the Environmental Protection Agency as a means to control the discharge of things from the surface, from surface runoff into the sewer system.
Article passes 125 in favor, nine opposed, no abstentions.
And so the town has essentially had to create a whole division just for handling stormwater.
Now we jump ahead to Article 17.
Article 17, Mr. Moderator. Article 17 is a funding request for property valuation services. We're requesting $160,000 from overlay surplus to fund the property valuation services for the town's five-year property valuation certification by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The reason for this request is, is again, in conformance with state law, the town has to do a five-year property revaluation, and the town has to physically visit and see every property on a 10-year cycle. Where, as noted, we're up for that revaluation this fiscal year. There are, town has 14,000 parcels of land in terms of properties that have to be visited, 9,000, over 9,000 single-family homes, almost over 2,800 condos, and roughly about 1,000 commercial properties. And obviously, we don't have the staffing capability to do that in-house. And so like many other communities, we periodically come to the town meeting to obtain funding to do these cyclical inspections in order to conform with state law. That's the request under this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 17.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 17.
Any questions? There being none, we will vote on Article 17, transfer $160,000 from overlay surplus to fund property valuation services. The article passes 126 in favor, 12 opposed, one abstention. Article 18.
Article 18 is, is a request to provide increased exemptions for veterans. This article was passed by the legislature in the past year, and was brought forward by our Veterans Agent Regina Jackson, who unfortunately, due to an injury, is unable to be present with us this evening. But Regina worked very hard, meeting with myself, Finance Director John Souza, and the Board of Assessors, in order to advance a local option to provide assistance to veterans in their, in their property tax. And the Legislative Act was known as the HERO Act. It was formerly known as Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024. And it increases certain veterans' exemptions. They have to be accepted by town meeting, and the true cost of it is borne by the town. So the state provides the exemption capability, the town decides whether to do it, and then the town bears the additional higher cost of the new exemption. Here, what this clause, what we're bringing forth at this time, is Clause 22I, which basically provides a cost of living adjustment to the veteran's benefit, the $400 exemption that's annually provided. So what happens is, is basically, the start of every calendar year, the Department of Revenue issues out to cities and towns the CPI for Massachusetts, and that would dictate the increase in the exemption for the upcoming year. And then it becomes cumulative as you roll forward. See, the idea is, is that the benefit retains its value over time. So in this case, you know, the $400 exemption, if it, if inflation goes up by 3%, it then becomes $412, and so forth. And then the 412 would become a later number in greater years. The estimated cost of this for the towns in the, what we call the overlay, which is the amount that we set aside for abatements and exemptions, is roughly $5,000. And it's a, it's a modest start. And once this is adopted, we'll continue to work with, with Veterans Agent Regina Jackson and the assessors to see what additional relief we can perhaps provide to veterans, and you'll see in the next article for seniors in upcoming fiscal years. That's the presentation under this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 18.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 18.
Do we have any discussion regarding veterans' exemptions? There are none. We will vote to approve an annual increase to the exemption granted to veterans. The article passes 137 in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Article 19.
Article 19, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, is a senior exemption. Again, similarly, it's a local option to provide a cost of living or consumer price index adjustment for the senior exemption. In this case, it's under, defined under state law as Chapter 17F. It provides an increase of exemption for seniors who are seven years old, or a minor children with one deceased parent, surviving spouse. And again, there's certain income limits in terms of the state and their cost of living. So in this case, the exemption would increase annually by the CPI. It's a $175 exemption. There are few who currently qualify, I think it's about a dozen or so, who qualify for this exemption, but we're going to provide it at this time as a starting point. And as I mentioned in the previous article, we'll look in future years to see what additional support the town can provide within its financial constraints. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 19.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 19.
Any discussion regarding senior exemptions? There being none, we will vote on Article 19. Article passes unanimously, 138 in favor. Article 20.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 20 is a request for $50,000 to study options to improve municipal operations and efficiencies. As, as you've been hearing throughout the night, we, we are concerned with what's in front of us, and we know that we can't maintain services that were currently provided. We know, for example, the big cost drivers you heard this evening, health insurance. We don't anticipate at this point in time that health insurance will be another 17.8% increase next year, but what we're being advised, it is certainly going to be double digits. Same thing with the retirement assessment. You may recall my comments earlier. The retirement assessment is, they do a two-year actuarial valuation. This year was 8.4%. The second of the two years, they've told us, is going to be 6.5%. The problem is math. You can't, if 75% of the town's revenue is constrained by 2.5% and, and some new growth, you can't be meeting the cost with inflation, with inflation, when the state aid is increasing at less than an inflationary level. And, and so the numbers don't add up. So we don't know, and as I showed earlier, we know that we're projecting that if we were to try to level surface our, our budget, we're going to be in the deficit to millions of dollars in the upcoming year. Now, true, you know, a three-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit is, is of a $168 million, $170 million budget, you know, it's 2%. But that's still $3.5 million. And that, that has to come from somewhere. And as you kind of pull all the remarks of what we're talking about this evening, we've got a challenging labor market because of the labor shortage and the demands that labor are rightfully requesting, because they're feeling the pain, just like the residents in the community, on trying to earn a living and maintain where they are when they go to the grocery store, they send their kids to college and everything else. And, and it's just the same thing. So why we're asking for $50,000 is, we may need that money to look at everything. There are no longer, anything is no longer off the table. We know what the community values. We know we value our education system. We know we value public safety. We know we've got to be responsible with our infrastructure. We also know that we've got to live responsibly and have a balanced budget under state law as well as to, to, you know, this isn't a sort of, oh, if we can get by this one year, then, then things will level out and we'll be okay. There's so much uncertainty, particularly with the federal government. When, when, you know, we're in this bizarre time right now, in the first 100 days of the new administration in Washington, but we know there's going to be a new federal budget in October. And what is that going to look like? It's probably not going to be more. And so that's why we're looking for this money. I can't tell you how we're going to spend it. But what I can tell you is, if the money's available, that I will sit with the Select Board, consult with the Finance Committee, consult with the School Committee, consult with the department heads, and figure out, what do we have to look at? And we, you know, it's, but it's everything. And so some of the examples, some have already fallen off the table. We put a ballot question on at the ballot and, back in April, April 1st, and said, hey, does the town want the community to look at marijuana retail sales as a revenue source? That failed miserably, like 28% to, you know, 62%. So that's off the table. But that doesn't mean the quest ends. We now have to look at other areas. You know, do we look at regional public safety dispatch by either joining the facility that provides services in Tewksbury, to Tewksbury and Drakeit? Or do we look at ourselves and say, hey, maybe Chelmsford could provide dispatch for Tingsborough or, and/or another town? It's those type of things that we've got to look at. And yes, you probably have heard, and, and we've even looked at the question of water. Now, and I know this has created controversy, and that doesn't mean it doesn't, difficult things aren't meant to look at. I am not considering, and I don't think the Select Board, in my discussion with them, are saying, the town should take over the water districts. But given that the water districts in their entirety are residents of the town of Chelmsford, does it make sense in the year 2026 to be operating three separate water districts in a town the size of Chelmsford? That doesn't mean you can just plug them together and they all work, because you've got three systems, or three flows, three treatment plants, three operations. But the question then becomes is, would they be better served by one water district consolidation that would oversee the, the entire system, and then provide more efficiencies in terms of operations and staffing and expertise and billing systems and so forth? So that's why I say, everything's on the table. I don't know. We haven't decided. But, but what I do know is, over the next year, as we, as we come back, perhaps in the fall, or certainly in the spring, we are going to have to roll up our sleeves and deal with what comes at us, and also look at everything, because we realize, in, in looking at other communities, whether they're Westford, whether they're Drakeit, or what have you, that it's just not sustainable. And so we ask this to enable us to have some financial resources, that we have to go out and, and obtain financial assistance by professional services to help in that investigation and analysis, that we have a modest amount of money available, so that we can quickly engage a consultant to assist us in that quest. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 20.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 20.
Any questions or discussions about this?
Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. The way the article is written, this is the second slide, not the first slide, what's included in the study is sale of recreational cannabis in regional public safety dispatching. Both things have been rejected by the town representatives. And on April 1st, the Chelmsford voters rejected soundly recreational cannabis. So these two things should be eliminated from this study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Scott Davidson, Precinct 3. I have a couple of questions. So, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. If we fund this study, could you give an example of like, what would success look like? So, like if we could say at some point, that was $50,000 well spent. Like, could you give like some recommendation or example that would be like a positive sign?
Sure. So, for example, you know, this article doesn't require us to do anything or to any, or mandate investigation in any particular area. But let's say, for example, we wanted to look at regional public safety dispatch. We would basically, you know, work with our police, fire, dispatch employees to look at what it would cost. But at some point, you also have to have some expertise that we don't have in-house in terms of what type of equipment we could receive, what types of grants are available, what type of efficiencies are there. And there are basically consulting firms who basically would come in and provide that service for you. So, we would in essence receive a report saying, look, we've, these are the different areas that we've looked at. This is the advantages, these are the disadvantages. And then the town can make an informed decision, many of which would have to come to this body for approval. So, that's what you would basically receive, is you'd receive some, a report on that in terms of what's, you know, what exactly, in what area are you looking at? And then what do you, you know, and then what's it going to cost? And then what are the pluses and what are the minuses? We can then decide where to go with it. So, again, that's what we're looking at is, at some point, you know, what would we do? And in order to do that, sometimes you need an independent verification or analysis to say, yeah, this is what it is. Because otherwise, it could be seen as, well, how do you know? Or are you pushing an agenda? And the idea would be, no, let's get a neutral, professional third party who could basically look at and say, look, we've done this, we've looked at this, these are the pluses and these are the minuses. This is our report and recommendations. I mean, it's similar to what you heard earlier under the school analysis. In the school analysis, we're going to have to look at what grade configurations. So, you look at what grade configurations in the school study. Is it, you know, these grades, those grades, that grades? Renovation, expansion, or new construction? The same thing. When you're looking at a municipal service, you would look at, well, what is it that we want to do? And then what are the alternatives to providing it? And what are the drawbacks and the advantages? So, the end result is, and simply put, is you basically receive a report that would be a public document that will be looked at by all parties and ultimately perhaps by town meeting to decide what is it that we wish to pursue.
Great. Thank you. You actually hit on my other questions that I was going to ask, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, we will vote on Article 20. The article passes, 112 in favor, 25 opposed, no abstentions. Article 21.
Article 21 is an article brought forward by the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jay Lang, regarding foster care reimbursement. Basically, again, you're seeing the theme this evening is, are we leaving any money on the table? And to Dr. Lang's credit, he brought forth this potential funding source of which the town may be able to receive federal reimbursement for the transportation of basically foster care children. In order to do that, the law requires that the school committee had to enter an agreement and that the town meeting approved this action. So, that's what's requested under this article, under what's known as Title IV E of the Social Security Act, to get a 20% reimbursement for foster care transportation costs. I think the estimate is maybe we get about $25,000 per year potentially out of this funding action. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 21.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 21.
Does the School Committee have an opinion on this?
The School Committee unanimously approved applying for this program.
Thank you. Time for questions, discussion? There being none, we will vote on Article 21. Article passes unanimously, 136 in favor. Article 22.
Article 22 is a proposed amendment to the town's general bylaws. What I'm seeking here is to address a conflict within the charter and the bylaws, which really up until now hadn't really mattered. But as you can see, the world's a little different right now. As you can see on the screen, under the language of the town charter, under the Budget Process, Section 6.2, it reads that the preliminary budget as adopted by the school committee shall be submitted to the town manager at least 90 days prior to the spring session of the annual town meeting to enable the town manager to consider the effect of the school department's requested appropriation upon the total town budget which is required to be submitted under the section. The town bylaw, under Section 35.1, reads, "The town manager submit to the Finance Committee proposed budget and capital improvement plan for the ensuing fiscal year with an accompanying budget message and reported documents as set forth in Section 6.2 of the general, of the Chelmsford Home Rule Charter at least 90 days prior to the spring session of the town meeting." Well, I've known for years, the 90 days of 90 days doesn't give you any time. So, you, you know, the charter says the school committee is going to give it 90 days for the town manager to consider the budget, but then I have to release my budget in 90 days. So, what I'm proposing in this article is to change the 90 days for the town manager's budget to 80 days. And therefore, the additional 10 days would allow the town manager to obtain the preliminary budgets of the school department, the Neshoba Tech School District, and the governor prior to the submission of the proposed budget and capital improvement plans to the Select Board and Finance Committee. So, it really is not going to change the timeline. And so, for example, if this were adopted, that 10 additional days, this is how I foresee the schedule would play out a year from now. We'll be at town meeting on Monday, April 27th of 2026. I would submit the town manager's budget on Thursday, February 5th. The school committee traditionally, superintendent presents his budget to the school committee on February 3rd, which would be before the release of the manager's budget. And then the Shoba Tech budget is always the last Friday in January because they have to meet their earliest town meeting, which is the town of Westford, which has a March town meeting. And then the governor has to submit the budget by the last Wednesday of January, which would be January 28th, 26th. So, that's the request under this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 22.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 22.
Any questions or discussions on this article? There being none, we will vote on Article 22. The article passes unanimously, Article 23.
Article 23 is an increase in dog license fees. The, it's basically $5 for the general dog license. The fee hasn't been increased since 2014. And so, the request is to increase the license fees as displayed in the motion on the screen. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 23.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 23.
Any discussion on Article 23? There being none, we will vote on Article 23. The article passes, 126 in favor, 7 opposed. Article 24.
Article 24 is an increase in fees for the seal of weights and measures. You may recall my earlier remarks this evening. I talked about how we had to transform the seal of weights and measures from being part of a regional program through the Northern Middlesex Council of Government to a multi-town program where we're the lead community with Westford and Tewksbury. Basically, we're trying to cover our costs under this program. And you can see, it's basically for the different scales and gas pumps, oil trucks, and devices, and scanners, and so forth as presented. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 24.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 24.
Any questions or discussion? There being none, we will vote on Article 24. The article passes, 130 in favor, 2 opposed, no abstentions. Article 26, please.
Okay, Article 26 is the one funding request for a new project under the Community Preservation Fund. And this request is to basically extend the underground utility project through the town center, basically from the town common where the first phase was, through, passed through the Oddfellows Building, through the Central Square, to the library. The request is to appropriate $2 million from the Community Preservation Fund, $1 million which would be borrowed from the Community Preservation Fund in future revenue years collections, and $1 million that will be funded from the Preservation Fund's general reserve. This is what we want to get rid of in the town center, as envisioned sadly going back to the 1990s by the community. And the work of the common was well received. And the request became, why can't we get the remainder of the work done? And the reason is, it goes, everything goes back to state law. And in this case, when the state legislation that still exists today talks about the funding sources for how you pay the utilities, in this case Verizon for the telephone lines, and National Grid for the electrical lines, and then modestly the cable lines from the, you know, Comcast and FiOS, the outdated legislative statute is fine on the electric side. Basically, it was a surcharge on your electric bills for the funding of the work. And right now, that surcharge fund has $4 million in balance. And it's had $4 million in balance, and the surcharge was shut down over eight years ago. The challenge has been, the problem has been, how do you fund the Verizon portion for the telephone lines? And the reason for the hesitancy and why it hasn't occurred and why we're using this funding method is because the Verizon account is restricted to a surcharge on landlines. And we all know the popularity and frequency of landlines in the 21st century. And so, the problem has been, when Verizon did the first phase of the project, they actually ran a deficit. And then once they made up that deficit three years later, they suspended the surcharge and ended the program. And because they were only collecting about $70,000 per year on the landline. And so, if you've got a project that's in the millions of dollars, probably, I think the latest estimate was like $1.7 or so million. Well, it's $70,000 a year payback, they're not going to do the project, and they haven't done the project. So, working with our new town council and looking at available alternatives, what we did find as a viable funding source that wouldn't raise property taxes because the source would come from the Community Preservation Fund, 1.5% surcharge that is already assessed, so that funding mechanism is in place, that's the solution. And we found in researching the Community Preservation Fund archives that the Community Preservation Fund are allowed for use for restoration of historic places. And so, the Community Preservation Committee is the threshold and has to approve this project. The Community Preservation Committee considered this project back in January and reexamined it in March and unanimously approves this project. The final step of the project was, we had to deem the town center as historically significant. So, Community Preservation Chair Linda Prescott and I went to the Historical Commission. They voted to deem the town center as historically significant, which wasn't too hard of a vote, but it needed to take place. And so, that's the final threshold. And so, if this article is approved this evening, we will immediately engage Verizon and National Grid to begin the design work for this project in order to, you know, basically fulfill the vision that was adopted by town meeting and to remove these lines and put the work underground utilities. And why it's so costly is, as you may know, is what you look at there, there's a brook that runs underneath that road. And there are significant trunk lines from Verizon that go out, you know, out across the community. And so, the only cost to the property owners is, is they would have to pay for the underground connection from their private property to the right-of-way where the utility lines are suppressed. So, that's how it would be funded, Mr. Moderator. If approved, like I said, we would engage Verizon. It would probably take a year plus for them to do the design work. Then it would have to rebid, and then we would see construction thereafter. And this would again fulfill the major area of the community for the underground utilities. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 26.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 26.
Please.
Hi, Lauren Roberts from Precinct 8. Just a question regarding this. You mentioned that the surcharge would normally cover a portion of this. Will that be recovered over time?
No, we are not planning at this point to turning the surcharge on because, again, it's only a modest amount of revenue. And also, the other thing that's nice about this is where it is the Community Preservation, since the whole community benefits, the whole community contributes. Whereas if we were just to impose a surcharge on the few people who have landlines, that really would be a little bit disproportionate. So, no, there's no plan at this point to activate either the Verizon or the National Grid surcharge. We believe there's ample funding in the National Grid surcharge to undertake its cost of the project. We believe this funding will cover the Verizon costs. And the law doesn't allow you to use one surcharge for the other's cost. And then when this is all completed, then the community could then make an assessment, do they want to go more? The only areas that were beyond this in the original underground plan was going down Chelmsford Street, you know, from Erickson's Corner and a little ways down Borger Road. But that decision could be made at a later date. And at that point, the town could decide its funding mechanism.
Thank you.
Christine McNamara, Precinct 8. I'm wondering if there's any consideration to go beyond the historic region in town for any of the utility?
That would have to be decided at a later date. I mean, we're trying to get the original vision and goal, and it's quite costly. And quite frankly, the utilities have no interest in doing these projects. And the reason why is, they don't get any more money from revenue, whether the lines are above ground or underground. So, this is really kind of a nuisance and annoyance to them in terms of, and not a priority. But I think, again, as I said earlier, what the town can do is, once this work were completed, it could then decide, do we want to do more? And if so, where do we want to do it?
Great. And would you be preserving all the sidewalk work that was done before? So, it would be restored?
Yeah, I mean, the goal would be to put the work within the roadway, not in the brick sidewalk, because that would even brick sidewalk, because that would be even more costly to replace. And then, when it is done, you would see the entire area resurface, because otherwise, I mean, it's challenging enough now with the uneven surface. When you tear it all up to put in the underground utilities, we're not going to not resurface the roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Sleeper, Precinct 1. I said a question about the project. It does seem like it could be pretty extensive with possibly a lot of utility relocations and digging up of sidewalks, putting all that underground. Is it possible that if the utility companies, they get into design and decide it might be a lot more money than they wanted to spend, will we get our $1 million back?
They don't give you money back. What they would do is, like any other design, you would get a schematic design with a cost estimate, and prior to bringing this forward, we had discussions with council, myself, with folks from Verizon, and they believe, as I said earlier, the number is probably around 1.6, 1.7. I'm asking for 2 million because, as you said, you often don't know what you don't know until you get in there. So, that's what we believe at this, without any design, we think is a safe number. But obviously, if it's material, we're going to have to come back because, you know, we wouldn't have the funding to do it. But no, if they incur costs to do the design work, and it's not feasible, they're not going to refund, you know, so there is a chance that you could lose some portion of that money if the project doesn't advance.
Is there a possibility that they could do maybe a feasibility study first before they went into design to see how much this really could cost, so that maybe we wouldn't lose that million?
Well, again, they looked at plans that they had previously, because again, they had designed for the entire project. Obviously, those people have since moved on. Again, as I said earlier, their best estimate was around 1.6, 1.7, and that's what we have to go on. The problem with delaying it in terms of, we'll come do it now for funding, and do a design, and then come back at a later date, you're going to slow down the process, and the problem is, every year the project goes out, the cost probably increases. So, you probably wouldn't save money by doing it in a staggered or stepped method.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Precinct 11. Out of curiosity, will this just be a replacement as in existing capacity? Be designed underground, or would the underground work allow for future upgrades of the system easily?
I would expect that National Grid would put additional conduit capacity, because as you're alluding to, if the electric is the phase of the future, then yes, and, you know, they probably would put a larger conduit in the ground, but that shouldn't materially increase the cost of the project. But, oh yeah, their idea is, they're going to do this so that it doesn't have to be touched for 50 years.
100.
Hopefully 100, yeah.
Thank you.
I won't have to worry about 100.
Hi, Tom Mameiro, Precinct 5. I mean, there is a difference between, you know, utility lines above ground and below ground. The ones above are much more vulnerable to, you know, power outages when heavy snow freezes and the lines go down. So, I'm wondering if you've thought at all or looked into, if there's any, the state or anyone might want to help fund things like this to increase resilience?
Well, quite frankly, consumers in this state are so upset with the utility costs for electricity and natural gas, that there isn't a state legislature and the Commonwealth, I think, who would propose increasing those prices even more, because it's making the state competitively challenged compared to other parts of the country, because we have the highest, you know, electricity and natural gas costs in the nation. So, I don't foresee them basically doing that. And I know, for example, going back as far as Governor Patrick, after we had a few ice storms and bad situations, he had sort of talked about, well, maybe we should look at doing more undergrounding, but the costs are just ridiculous. As you can see, here we're doing this area here for, you know, probably going to amount to close to $4 million. There's no way that they're going to contribute money towards resiliency here, because again, it doesn't increase efficiency, it just takes those lines. And quite frankly, when the power goes out in Chelmsford, it's not because the power's going out in Central Square, the power goes out in Chelmsford because of the wooded areas and the areas where the transmission lines are, not because, you know, the lines in the center are being blown down or weighted down by snow and ice.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, we will vote on Article 26.
Yeah, he's got one job, and he's doing it.
If you have followed town meeting for a long time, know that this project was front and center roughly 15 years ago, and then it just kind of disappeared, and now we know why.
The article passes, 107 in favor, 17 opposed, one abstention. We are going to bypass Article 27, since that's the citizens' petition, and we will be dealing with that first thing on Thursday. Article 28.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 28 is a proposed amendment to the town zoning bylaws, and the article is submitted by me as town manager, and this, as the title suggests, is to introduce fast casual restaurants into the Route 129 overlay district. The overlay district was adopted back in 2016, nine years ago, to consideration by the town in order to basically introduce amenities and improve our corridor. The change is listed there in the slide, but basically, approval of this amendment would allow standalone fast casual restaurants. The way the current bylaw is right now, the only drive-through restaurants allowed have to be what we call adjoining restaurants, like the Press Cafes. You can see, is a portion of a larger building, an end unit that allows drive-throughs. The bylaw as currently standard does not allow for standalone drive-through restaurants. The amendment to this bylaw would only allow the standalone drive-through restaurants for the portion of the 129 corridor that exists from Alpha Road to the Borica Town Line, and the end portion of Mill Road, basically where the Lighthouse School was, and Life Links used to be by the apartments, towards Billrica Road. The bylaw would also be amended to allow only three fast casual drive-through restaurants. Right now, we have one, which is Press Cafe, and this would allow for two additional ones. It would also allow expanded hours of operation. What drove this is the fact that, again, we're seeking to allow amenities in 129. Press Cafe has been a phenomenal success in the years that they've been open. They're ridiculously busy, it's been successful, they're doing well, but disappointingly, no one else has come, despite their success. The Community Development Director, Evan Belansky, and I were recently approached by the owner of this parcel here that you see in the screen, right at the end of Mill Road at Billrica Road, which is bounded by three sides by the interstate off-ramps of 129 and Route 3. So, as you can see, that area there where, again, Life Links was, and the Lighthouse School was most recently, now it sits vacant without a tenant, and it's a challenge filling office space, as we know, in this post-COVID economy. The goal here and the vision here would be to take that property, allow it to be raised, and then put a plan similar to what you see on the screen, which would allow for two standalone drive-throughs with separate entrances on that portion of Mill Road. The goal here is, how it would work is, there's already a traffic signal at the corner of Mill Road, and dedicated left-turn lanes at Mill Road from either direction, and therefore, it wouldn't have an impact on traffic flow. It also is at the edge of the business corridor, as you can see, there's the Route 3, and then the forums on the other side there at the town line. So, it really doesn't have an impact on the business district, because it's at the shoulder of the district, and it also has no impact on residential property owners, because you can see at that area, it's bounded by three sides of the off-ramp and 129 Mill Road, and then across the way was that plaza, which originally was seen and zoned for a retail, but it never materialized. Now, it's a school that treats children with autism, the one that's up there on that lift above the roadway. So, the envision here is, within this corridor from Alpha Road to this town line, including this parcel, which we've had interest from one property owner, it would allow for two standalone drive-through restaurants. The third and final piece of this discussion is the design. If this is approved, the applicant or in-applicant would still have to go to the planning board for site plan approval, which means the planning board would have the say in terms of the exterior appearance of the building, much like they did in the photo here for the CVS facility. The CVS facility in the town center was not submitted that way when it was originally envisioned to the planning board. It would be more typical for CVS, you would have seen in other communities, but the planning board reserves the right for exterior appearance and approval to make that any project that comes in would have to meet appropriate design standards for the community. That's the presentation on this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval with one abstention.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 28.
Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends approval of this article. Five in favor, zero against, with two abstentions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this zoning bylaw change?
Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. I have a prepared statement. In looking at the number of McDonald's, Burger Kings, Wendy's, and Starbucks along Route 3, the surrounding area is saturated with them. At Drum Hill, there already are one McDonald's, one Burger King, and two Starbucks, but very few area upscale Press Cafes. At present, the planning board is considering a proposal to renovate the Chelmsford Mall, including a McDonald's or something like it. All in all, it makes more sense to place McDonald's at the Chelmsford Mall area rather than at Mill Road. But since there are fewer upscale Press Cafes, this should be considered instead. The town has an upscale Press Cafe across from Mill Road at 330 Billrica Road. The Warren article entails multiple challenges, I'm sorry, multiple changes to the 2016 BAOD bylaw, which are inconsistent with that bylaw. However, these changes actually eliminate the restrictions and requirements of the BAOD that were placed as necessary to ensure high-quality amenities in order to attract high-quality businesses and jobs, for the purpose of creating a high-quality business district, creating something extraordinary, something great. This BAOD vision strives for excellence, to usher in a bright future with high-quality possibilities that complement the town's character. This pursuit of excellence is taught in the Chelmsford school system, and should be emulated in making decisions for the town, especially with long-term impacts. Also, downgrading the BAOD based on "the market" is not excellence.
One minute.
Thank you. The market is ordinary, very fickle, and unreliable. Taking the guts out of the BAOD vision is not the pursuit of excellence. These types of changes were expressly omitted by design to prevent another Drum Hill commercial jumble. If creating another Drum Hill was originally proposed for the BAOD, it would not have been adopted. Without high-quality businesses, there are no high-quality possibilities or a bright future, only very dull possibilities with a dull future. Therefore, choose excellence, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Latina, Precinct 9. That section of Mill Road, if you could put the map there, that design was done by Mr. Reddy many years ago. It's called a bugle design. You'll notice it doesn't have a cloverleaf there. That angle there that you see, that big tight circle coming back onto Mill Road, and now having an apartment complex at the top of it, also has, I believe it's Elizabeth Drive coming down? There's 100 cars that come down there every night and try to make a quick left-hand turn onto Mill Road to make a right-hand turn to go to New Hampshire.
Pardon me, are you asking a question or are you arguing?
Does this sound like a question, Mr. Moderator? It is not a question.
Okay.
We live in that neighborhood just beyond there. It's about 600 residents up and beyond there on Mill Road. When the school was there, you couldn't even go past there with all the buses parked on that Mill Road section. If you throw McDonald's in there, which was specifically discussed at town meeting, that we would not have any drive-throughs, and certainly not McDonald's, in this overlay district. And now, you're going to put two of them there. The bugle design was designed to get people out of there and up and out of that area so they wouldn't come into the center of town up 129. It was designed that way. If you go and throw McDonald's in there, folks, we won't be able to go home or come out of there. We can't even fix the potholes on the right-hand side of that. The snowplow doesn't plow that section there. It doesn't plow the sidewalk in front of the handicapped school, never did. We had to fight to get it done. The state doesn't plow the overpass sidewalk. Go look at it right now, there's gravel on the sidewalk that goes to Borica. We don't get services here as it is now, and we're going to throw McDonald's in with an automated teller thing and a couple employees in the back playing with the cell phones? Are you kidding me? This is not Borica, this is Chelmsford. We specifically did an overlay to put high-end stuff, like Littleton did. There's not a McDonald's or Burger King at Littleton. There's not one at Third Avenue in Burlington either. This is high-end. Now, we're putting warehouses and McDonald's in, folks, and we're going to make it impossible for us to get in and out of there. I was nearly swept off the road at Mill Road, turning left onto that double left-hand turn that's a disaster. People cut across your bow on the right-hand side to cut in front even on Mill Road. Wait till somebody that doesn't know the area there takes out the car. And as a final one, my son was in a mini, was in a full-size white handicap van with a driver, and the car coming out of Elizabeth Drive T-boned it. They couldn't see it, because that intersection is a disaster.
Less than a minute.
No McDonald's, no McDonald's. We were promised at town meeting, no McDonald's in this entire area, and then we start spot zoning. Absolutely not, no, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Scott Davidson, Precinct 3. I had a clarifying question on the actual wording on the bylaw. Could you put that slide back up? Yeah, I think it's the first one, four. Do we define anywhere what the difference is between an upscale casual restaurant and a fast casual restaurant? Are those definitions anywhere in our bylaws?
Evan, no, there's no definition of upscale. What we're seeing, and the mention was made earlier about Chelmsford Street, what we're seeing is, what they consider upscale is your Panera, your Press Cafe, that generally tended to be what it would be. I think upscale was more when you're inside the restaurant, that you would have silverware. That generally tends to be upscale.
So, I'm further confused then, because you just referred to Press Cafe as an upscale, and then on your next slide below, it says, Press Cafe already exists as a fast casual. So, I'm not sure what the difference, why we need to change upscale to fast, or if they're not defined, what's what?
Again, when the bylaw was envisioned nine years ago, it required that there be tableware in the inside of the restaurant. That was the definition of upscale. Fast casual would not require that. And so, generally, your Starbucks and those places don't require that. So, that's the difference. So that's the difference between upscale and fast casual.
Thank you. You can start the clock. So I'll be brief. Pretty much everything that the previous speaker said. I was here in 2016, this is not what the purpose of this overlay district was for, so I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Christine McNamara, Precinct 8. I was just curious if it had to be a drive-through? Like, if you wanted to just put one large restaurant? Is there a reason to accommodate the drive-through?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. The reason is, what we've seen in the market since post-pandemic is people do not want to get out of their car, whether that's people with young children, or whether that's elderly and so forth. And so that's why we're seeing this interest on Chelmsford Street by the Chelmsford Mall by Kohl's, and we're seeing it out here on 129, is they want drive-through. That's the key. Because, and that's why you don't have the issues in terms of the septic demand or anything else in the facilities, is because people basically want to get in their car, stay in their car, and go on. And that's, if you look even at Press Cafe, that why that drive-through is so busy, that's today's world. That wasn't the world in 2016, when this bylaw was adopted. That's how the market is today. So that's why the drive-through.
Yeah, and it also creates so much waste that, you know, it sort of, one thing is counteracting the other. The waste costs go up because everything's disposable, right?
And the benefits of the town, quite frankly, is mealstacks. We would get mealstacks from these restaurants that basically people would be frequenting to the community, and most of the traffic they've indicated would come from Route 3. Because from Drum Hill to the Burlington line, there really is no place you can get off nearby the Route 3 exit that you can go to and get a Starbucks or that type of establishment, you know, and stay in your car and get quickly back onto Route 3, in either direction.
Are there specific restaurants that you have, or people have in mind that have expressed an interest in whatnot?
What we've heard from the Chelmsford Street locations, which again, are allowed under zoning and go before the planning board, they've already been informally, they have said they have no interest in McDonald's or Wendy's or anything on Chelmsford Street. That's a different owner. That's Win Stanley that recently purchased the Chelmsford Mall from Mr. Carey's. He's looking at, quite frankly, your Chick-fil-A's, your Starbucks, your press cafes, your Paneras, because that's the market that's out there right now. That's what's growing. That's the market that's growing. Here on Mill Road, they have no agreements with tenants. It could be a Starbucks, it could be a McDonald's, it could be a press cafe, it could be a Panera. The issue with Chick-fil-A, quite frankly, is Chick-fil-A now, because it's so popular, need dual drive-throughs. And you're not going to see that here, the lot just isn't big enough on any of the parcels in the area. But that's a market that's out there now, and that's what you see growing. If you look in the area, there's a Chick-fil-A being built in Hudson right now, there's, you know, these other type of restaurants, that's the market that's growing, what they call the upscale casual and fast casual. And part of it is due to inflation as well, because if you're going there, you're not paying the gratuity and everything else that you would pay if you dined inside. And so that's the market, and that's what these folks, I don't think it's coincidental that within a period of months, we've heard from this location and on Chelmsford Street by the Chelmsford Mall for this type of use, because that's where the market is. And in order to do that, think about it, in this location, they've got to tear that building down at that expense and construct two new buildings. And in order to do that, you have to have a long-term secured lease with financing, or you're not building anything. So that's why they believe in strongly that this is the type of market that's going to go with this location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Johanna Shaw, Precinct 9. I've got a question. Can we look at Slide 126, the proposed design? Thanks. What's the reasoning behind putting two separate entrances rather than one central entrance to that?
That's an illustrative design. This hasn't been approved by the planning board. The planning board may require one entrance. This was just a conceptual design by the property owners showing, could you fit two casual drive-throughs on one location? At this location, that's just an illustrative plan. As I said earlier, it's the planning board who's going to give permit approval, whether it's one entrance, two entrances, or what have you, to make, you know, and they'll also, I'm sure, require a traffic study and everything else in order for it to be approved by the town's regulatory board.
Okay, thank you. Can we go back to Slide 125, please? So, yeah, that one, thanks. You can start the clock. I would hope that we would, first off, I hope we don't approve this, but if we did, I would hope it would only have one entrance and exit point, because as it is, one would be a nightmare. For those of you who aren't familiar with this area, just, you can see where Mill Road at this edge of the green line where that property is outlined, that's Mill going down, but just off the bottom of the screen, it does a 90-degree bend. So you'd have potentially two entrances right after each other, right around a bend, so if there's any sort of backup from the drive-through where people are backed up onto the street picture, maybe the dunks at Drum Hill where that happens, you're going to have people coming around a bend not seeing that. It's going to be a nightmare. And we also heard that this would be close to these businesses and have no impact on residents. I live on Mill Road, down the road from this. Anybody who wants to get to this restaurant from, like, Old Stage or any of that part of town is going to come right down Mill Road. There's no way there's no impact to us. Absolutely no way. My driveway is a nightmare to back out of as it is, because I'm at the top of a hill with a curve and people come flying up it. If we add the traffic that this would draw, I'm never getting out of my house. This is not the place for it. We just heard that there's interest in the drive-through style restaurant, which I understand, but we heard there's interest on 110 and 129. Keep it on 110 and 129 where it belongs.
Thank you.
Will Wagner, Precinct 3. Mr. Town Manager, how long have we been searching for tenants for the majority of these buildings?
As you know, for the last, over a decade, when we did the rezoning and the, you know, and the efforts that we've had with the 129 branding and everything else, we've been trying to fill vacancies on 129. And part of the demand and the reason for that is the business owners told us that their employees are seeking amenities. And so they love the fact that Press Cafe is there, but when we've talked to some major employers out there and say, "What is your reaction to bringing in additional two fast casual drive-throughs?", they say their employees would welcome it because they don't want to go always to Press Cafe all the time, and that's about the only thing that's in close proximity in that area. So yes, the issue of filling vacancies and retaining those existing tenants on 129 has been a priority of the town for over a decade.
Thank you. And with this potential change, could we go back to the slide that has the changed wording? Thank you. So replacing the upscale casual, upscale fast casual restaurant, by replacing it with just fast casual restaurants, does that prohibit the upscale one that could go in in place of it?
No.
So just adding it to fast casual basically allows both sorts?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, you can start the clock. So one definition of insanity this goes around is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. We, nine years ago, voted for something which made sense at the time. We had grand intentions. Those intentions have not panned out. So we have 129 that has a lot of empty spots. Businesses have moved elsewhere, restaurants have not moved into the place. We need a change. Now, this is a proposed change, and the town manager has stated previously that the proposal in place still needs to go through all the normal approvals. It needs to go through building, it needs to go through permitting, it needs to go through traffic studies and everything like that. So just changing this proposal to allow someone who has expressed an interest in coming in here doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to happen, but we have someone who is interested. We have something which could change the system that has not been working for the last nine years. So I urge you to consider that and vote yes for this with the understanding that when this comes before the various boards, you can attend and express your discontent with any specific design at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ginger Scoog, Precinct 5. You'll remember Precinct 5. We just had a huge area cleared on North Road, because, you know, it went through all the good boards and everything, and we were supposed to be protected by the zoning and the other things. Yeah, now there's going to be a daycare center, a second one right down the street from another one on North Road. Right. 129 is a great vision. I don't think that where we were nine years ago, I do think things need to change. I don't know that this is it. I should have asked my question first, I apologize. Mr. Moderator, through you, to the speaker, I'll give up my time. You can keep it running. The change takes out 5:30 to 10:30 for drive-throughs? Does that mean we could have a 24-hour drive-through there?
Yes, you could.
Yeah.
That would have to be decided by the planning board.
Yeah, I'm aware. I'm aware. I have been a huge supporter of a lot of the things that we've done and a lot of the things the planning board has done, and a lot of things that are moving Chelmsford forward. I don't think this is our grandmother's Chelmsford. I also don't think that we need to be making the comparison to Bill Ricka, but I do think there are still other ways to work within what we've got to adjust what we're doing with 129 without going this far. I don't think this is the right place for something, and I think that making the changes at this point is going a step too far and opening us up in a way that we're going to regret. So I'm going to be voting no. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I have a question. Oh, sorry, Dorraine Dashler, Precinct 9. I have a question for them, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, can you go back to the pictures of the restaurants? It shows what they, yeah, that. Now, I see the restaurants. Now, I know they're drive-through, but are they also eat-in?
Yes.
Okay, where are they going to park?
You see all those angled spots there? Those are all the parking spaces. And again, the parking requirements would be specified by the planning board for indoor seating. So yes, there would be indoor parking seating as well, and that is a requirement that they have. And they also have to have exterior seating as well. So the bylaw requires indoor seating and exterior seating.
And outdoor seating?
Yes, outdoor seating, yes.
Doesn't look like it's big enough.
Again, that will be reviewed by the planning board.
Yeah. That is a bad corner, I know, because I've taken it a few times, because I used to do a dash, and I used to have to go down that way. And it is pretty scary sometimes. Sometimes cars come around and they're not on their side of the road, they're on your side of the road. I know that we definitely need to get something going on 129. We've been waiting forever, nothing's going there, it's been empty forever. We need, we definitely need to make some changes into the bylaws and get some stuff there because it's needed. It's definitely needed. It's been dead too long, and we're not getting anything out of it, and we need to help the taxpayers of Chelmsford by getting some businesses in there that are going to, you know, pay some taxes to bring down the housing taxes. But I'm not sure this is the right thing. I might be wrong, I don't know, but I think maybe one drive-through there, and then maybe find another one further up the road or something, but two there just seems like it's just too much. Can you just, oh, you already started, okay, that's good, thank you. Anyways, like I said, I believe that we need change, I definitely do. We definitely need change for 129. We need to pull in some businesses, and in order to pull in the businesses, like, plus that they're telling that they need amenities there for their employees. So we need to start thinking about ways of bringing in maybe the upscale, maybe the Starbucks or, I mean, Starbucks is kind of upscale, I guess. And Chick-fil-A is a really big thing right now, and they really have to have dual, maybe the one Chick-fil-A with the dual there would be good. But anyways, I would, me, I don't know, the two buildings I'm kind of afraid of, but like you said, we have to go through the planning board. Anyways, maybe we can convince the planning board to knock it down to one. Let's just give it, let's keep it an open mind, let's just keep it open for now, and just because we're saying yes now doesn't mean we're saying yes to the McDonald's or the Burger Kings or any of those, because we can still say no to them through the planning board. So I'm asking everybody to keep an open mind and to maybe vote yes on this, but to beware and to come to the planning board meetings when the businesses, you know, come to the town and say, "Okay, we want to be the restaurant there." Go to the planning board and make sure you make your opinions and your things are known to the planning board, so the planning board knows what the town wants. So that's all I have to say. I'm going to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Freitas, Precinct 9. I live in that area. Most people who travel that area know that Route 3 is impossible. There are times in the morning when I can't get on Route 3. That Mill Road is 40 miles per hour. People fly on Mill Road. Those two left turns are impossible. I experience it quite frequently. I'm sure there's many people in this room who have been cut off at that left-hand turn because people violate that rule to go up Elizabeth Drive. They continually get in the right lane of the two left lanes, and they cut you off. That intersection, when you come from Route 4 to turn on to Route 3, can be a complete horror show. You have one lane going left towards Chelmsford Center, and you have two lanes going to the right to Route 3, and the next lane is what you get into to go down 495. And it backs up. If you put two entrances to that area, you are going to have a complete nightmare if those restaurants do any business. I am definitely voting no for the quality of life to the biggest percentage of population in town. There are two precincts in that area. I know many people want revenue in this town, but this would be a mistake the way that is on that screen. I'm just letting you know that this has to be put in with a lot of restrictions at planning board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct 7. I agree with a couple of statements of the previous speakers because I've been a town meeting rep since 1989, and we talked a lot about the 129, good clock's running. We've talked about the 129 district for a long time. There are hundreds of people there that are looking for someplace to eat at lunchtime. There'll be people that are driving by there, coming home from work later at night, like I do occasionally, that might be looking for a place to stop like a Chick-fil-A or some other restaurant. We constantly find reasons why not to do things. There's always something that's going to be wrong with every proposal that we make. But if we make these changes to the zoning restrictions here, we have the opportunity to look at potentially a good restaurant coming in there. I like Chick-fil-A a lot. If I find one, I'll probably stop there. But if there's a drive-through and they can serve the town and the hundreds of people that are working in the buildings around there, then they have an option besides Press Cafe, which I also like. But every time I've been there, it's been so busy that I have to make a decision whether I'm going to stop or drive-through, spend the minutes waiting for the drive-through, and get for the drive-through. And getting into Press Cafe is not that easy either because of the lights. So I'm going to vote for this and I strongly urge you to do the same because if we keep looking at property and spaces and stuff and do nothing, then we're not improving the situation for the 129 corridor. We're not improving the situation for the people that work there, that would be able to eat there at, at a couple of other optional restaurants. It, it's time to do something to improve that area. And I don't know who's asking to look at this place, but for decades, nobody's been asking to do anything. And if you drive down 129, you see open spaces. Nobody's asking to put restaurants in those open spaces. So what do we do? Just leave everything alone and pray for the best? Or do we make a change in the zoning and see if something very good comes into that location? So I urge you to vote yes for this to give the town an opportunity to put some more amenities down where we want to grow business and to provide the opportunity, not so much, but for more revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Walker Horton, District 6. It seems to me, as going right into comments, it seems to me that most of the recently heard disagreements with this would apply to any business that goes in there, not just the changes proposed by this amendment. So I don't see, it seems to me that the decision has already been made to allow businesses into that area. If we're worried about the traffic, that's going to happen regardless, any business that's there. So we should move forward, give the most possibilities for something to happen. And we've already decided that it's going to be a possibility. We should let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Tanini, Precinct 10. I also sit on the planning board.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Yep. I also sit on the planning board. I abstain from voting on this article because I wanted it to come to town meeting. I felt that we were all sold a vision of 129. Vacancy rates have dropped. They went, they were above 18% pre-COVID. Now they're down to 5% on 129. This came because a developer had McDonald's and Starbucks who wanted to put their location there. I fundamentally don't believe that we should be changing our zonings for developers. I have an issue with this being open 24 hours. I do not want 129 to be a Drum Hill. We have Drum Hill. We have a look for that. I think 20, 129 can be something different. And I will be voting no on this. We already, last time we were here, we did allow, I think, four drive-throughs on 129? Only, was it four or five? I can't remember. But there are open drive-throughs allowed for fast casual. I think we need to push back. I think we need to have the developer go and find other potential clients there. I don't think they've tried. So I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin Drayman, Precinct 7. That's an awkward location. Oh, please start the clock. That's an awkward location because of traffic and all that. What best business would go in there is, is a tough thing to look at. But you know, an awkward location in the middle of a bunch of highways and major roads might be a really good place for a solar farm. I'm not a big solar person personally.
Mr. Drayman, you're, you're really going off the topic here. So, no, no. Let's, let's stay focused on what is before town meeting. We're not, we're not looking at solar farms or regular farms or anything. Let's stay where we are.
I agree that we're not looking at that. But if we pass this, we can never look at that. I think we should defeat this now and rethink what might best be used. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney Cooper, Precinct 11. I was rezoned many years ago. I always forget. I just had a quick question. Is there any way that the, that the bylaw amendment could be changed to remove Mill Road from, so that it's solely just 129?
Again, the, anything could be amended, but the only portion of 129 is from Alpha Road to the Barica Line. And the only portion of Mill Road is basically that parcel that's shown. No other portion of Mill Road can be used. So therefore, if you could eliminate that one parcel, but quite frankly, I don't know of any other interest between, because even that building where it's cleared right now at Alpha Road wouldn't fall within the site. So you're basically talking from where that demolition is occurring right now and the new construction to the Barica Line. The, all those, I'm not aware of any other interests. So the answer is yes, it could be. But I'm just not aware of any other interests out there.
Okay. Yeah. So the other thing I just, to start the clock, just a random suggestion. I know that you said it's a hard time bringing in new businesses because the employees want amenities. A really popular thing right now is food trucks. So there's a lot of places that I go that they have rotating schedules. You bring in like, whatever, four food trucks. Mondays is so-and-so and the employees know. And then you can order on the apps and pick it up and they just run out and get it. It's no upkeep, like traveling. Weston Nurseries does it. Navigation Brewery does it. The Snow Mountains do it. So that was it. Just possible suggestion to the employees that there's a lot of opportunities for food trucks out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter, Badri Upli, Precinct 11. What's the estimated tax revenue from the Meals Plan if two fully loaded fast casual, because Press Cafe is upmarket? I'm assuming nobody's going to compete. And if they compete, then revenue falls from Press Cafe, maybe? Maybe not? Just a, just an idea. What, what are we aiming for?
You know, the problem is, is who is it? Because Press Cafe generates a volume that you don't have at a Starbucks. And, and, you know, and, you know, you're asking me to speculate who the tenants are going to be and what they're going to generate. You know, you can, you can figure out the volume if it's three-quarters of a percent Meals Tax and they're, they're grossing a million dollars per year and so forth. You can do the math, but the math really depends on who the tenant is. And that's, so therefore, to give you a range is, is pure speculation. However, it, you know, it, it's, it goes along the lines of some significance because we're taking in $600,000 a year in Meals Tax in this community. But this would obviously be a fraction of that. So, you know, it, it's just a guess. I mean, I don't want to guess 25,000, 50,000. You know, it's, it's going to depend who the candidate is.
Thank you very much because you answered the question. Probably, I should have asked the question in a different manner, but you answered the question that entirety of Chelmsford takes in about $600,000 in Meals Tax.
Yes.
Would there, I'm assuming apart from Meals Tax, there's also a property tax assessment on this?
Yes.
And commercial property tax assessment? Notionally, I don't know. Let's assume that this parcel redevelopment, new building that comes on is valued at $5 million. What is the commercial tax rate? I forget, I take on $5 million of assessed value?
Again, you're assuming, but the problem is the building currently has a property tax on it. So now you're asking me to tell, what type of building they're going to build? I just can't answer hypothetical questions.
I'm not even asking that. I'm just saying, if it's $5 million as the assessed value of the...
And the tax rate is, you know, $18 per thousand.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go do the math on it.
Then, then, you know, then it's, you know, it's, it's 18,000 per million. So 18 times five is roughly $90,000.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, you missed out the clock. I don't live in the Mill Road area, but I do drive through the Mill Road area. And that is a virtual hairpin bend. It's not a hairpin bend, but it's close enough to that, coming in from 129 and cutting back in. There are two lanes. One goes to Elizabeth Drive and one coming in to that parcel. I am very concerned about traffic and, and maybe the police chief will advocate afterwards for Mill Road to go from 40 miles to 25 miles from traffic safety. It's also not very accessible as a traffic point for all the other businesses. The two white roofs, I think it's analog devices over there. And then a whole residence right slightly south of that. So I don't think the economics or the, the flow of traffic is working out. I don't think anybody, as previous speakers have said, would exit, potentially out of Route 3 to just here when this is so isolated a location in, in general. So I feel that the traffic amount estimations are not necessarily there. But that's just my private opinion. I'm still mulling over. I'm tending to no, but before the vote's over, maybe I will say yes. But I think no for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Judy Carvin, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question for a vote.
Thank you. There's a motion to move the question. So...
Moving the question will, is a vote to bring debate to...
Majority to pass. And it looks like it hasn't barely so far.
The motion passed. 85 in favor. Well, 68% in favor, 30% abstain, 81%, 81%. Never mind. It passed. It is now 10 of 11. So let's vote on, on Article 28.
There's a two-thirds vote to approve because it's a zoning bylaw or an amendment to a zoning bylaw. And it looks very evenly divided at this point.
The article fails. Now, the, the next article, I don't know if there's anything we can do in 10 minutes, Paul.
Mr. Moderator?
Adjourn. Yes?
Could, could we have another meeting on Thursday night?
Well, yes, we can. I just was going to ask if we can get one thing done in 10 minutes, but if you want to do it Thursday, if, all in favor of adjourning until Thursday at 7:30? Anybody opposed? Okay. See you Thursday.
From Senior Center, after a very interesting spring session town meeting, after going through, like the, the, what was approved in very quick succession was the Neshoba Valley budget of $4 million, the public schools budget of $76 million, the, the general operating budget of $81 million, and the capital budget of $6 million, all virtually unopposed. Probably took 15 minutes for all. Look, it took longer for the presentations than it did for the votes. And then you hit a couple of road bumps. Like, we knew this was coming. This, this overlay district on Route 129 has been very problematic for a long time. And as you heard. And so for the town development people, it's, it's back to the drawing board, really. We are almost done. We got through all but about half dozen of the warrant articles. Coming up on Thursday will be a couple of interesting ones. One involving a redo of the outdoor lighting bylaw. And I'll have something to say about that on Thursday. Please tune in. And also whether or not the town should explore having a pet cemetery, among other things. So those will be the zoning bylaws to wrap up. We'll see you there on Thursday night. Thanks for joining. And thanks for all of the volunteers and staff of Chelmsford telling me who make this possible. See you on Thursday.